Good evening, everyone.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Let's hold them in it for translation. We're good now? Yes, okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 28th meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board. The meeting is called to order at 5:01 PM. To access translation in Zoom, please click on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. If you're here in Dejón, you may pick up a headset for translation in the back corner of the auditorium. The board is about to go into closed session, but before we do, we're here to listen to public comment on closed session items. Individuals wishing to speak on closed session items listed, if you're here in the auditorium, and you haven't already done so, please submit a WCCUSD public comment card, which you can find on the entryway table, and if you're participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. If you are accessing the meeting by phone, press star nine. The time allotted to each speaker is two minutes, and the total time allotted is one hour. Speaking time shall not be transferred from one person to another. There is also no substitution of speakers. We alternate between a Zoom comment and an in-person comment. The public comment period is a safe space where diverse viewpoints may be expressed civilly without interruption or intimidation. Please listen attentively to each speaker's comment and respect their time as if it were your own. Be open to a different point of view if one is offered. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. The items listed on the closed session agenda tonight are... Liability claims. Name withheld. Claim number 655120. Agency claimed against West Contra Costa Unified School District. Conference with labor negotiators. Public employee appointment, principal, director, superintendent. Public employee evaluation interim superintendent. Public employee discipline dismissal release complaint. And then we will adjourn back to closed session. Is there any public comment on closed session items?
We have no public comment.
Thank you so much. The board will reconvene to open session at 6:30. Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the open session of the regularly scheduled May, oh, June, I'm sorry, we're on June 4th meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. The board is returning from closed session, and I am calling open session to order at 6:35 PM. Thank you for your patience. To access translation in Zoom, please click on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. And if you're here in the auditorium and need translation, you may pick up a headset in the back corner of the auditorium. In a few minutes, we're going to begin public comment, and members of the public are invited to speak to the board on any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda but is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Please prepare now for public comment. If you're here in the auditorium and you'd like to make public comment, please fill out and submit a WCCUSD public comment card. You can find them on the table in the entryway. And if you're participating via Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand in the, in the app and prior to the beginning of the item on the agenda. If you're participating by phone, press star nine. After your comment card has been turned in, the cards are placed in the order received, and we call on speakers one at a time, alternating between the public comment here in Dejón and one on Zoom. Public comment generally lasts for one hour. The time allotted to each speaker is two minutes. In the meantime, we're going to be moving on to the rest of our opening procedures. B2, Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing or able, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. B3, Land, Labor, and Body Acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichen Yumuekma Karkin Aloni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitant of the land we currently occupy. Labor and body recognition acknowledgement. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that black and brown people were born and died during, died working this land against their will for generations. I also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. Author, Dr. Rochelle Rogers-Zard. B4, West Contra Costa Unified School District Board Anti-Racism Statement. The West Contra Costa District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. To carry WCC education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment, where each student, staff member, and community partner is respected and valued member of the WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned, and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to living these standards of anti-racism in our schools. Board approved, March 20th, 2024. B5, Roll Call. Dr. Moses, would you please take call, roll?
Yes, good evening. President Reckler?
Good evening, I'm present.
Clerk Iniana?
Good evening, everyone, present.
Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy?
Good evening, everybody, I'm on Zoom, but I'm present.
We are unable to hear trustee Gonzalez-Hoy.
Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy is joining virtually. He's having issues with the sound at the moment, we'll work it out. Trustee Smith-Fulze?
Good evening, everyone, present.
And trustee Hernandez is absent today. That concludes the roll call.
Thank you. Can we check again trustee Gonzalez-Hoy's sound?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Hold on, we still are not able to hear you. But trustee Gonzalez-Hoy is appearing on a just cause, and so the board, we're asking you to accept that he is appearing on just cause tonight due to a work engagement. Does anybody object? Seeing none, we'll fix trustee Gonzalez-Hoy's sound and continue. I'm sorry, did you say you can hear him? Oh, you can hear him online?
Can you hear me now, president?
Yes, we got it.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Okay, roll call is complete, thanks again. Okay, B6, Report and Ratification of Closed Session. Dr. Moses, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Yes, there is. I just want to apologize as well, I'm having issues with camera, so video is off at the moment. During closed session, item number A23, the vote, the board voted to approve the revised job description for Director, Business Services, State and Federal Programs. The vote was as followed. Unanimous yeses with trustee Hernandez absent. Also, in closed session agenda item A23, the board voted to approve the appointment of David Luongo as Interim Director of Business Services, State and Federal. The vote was as followed. Unanimous yes vote with trustee Hernandez absent. Same item, the board also voted to approve the appointment of Denise Steen as Director of Classified Employee, Employees' Human Resources. The vote was also unanimous with trustee Hernandez absent. Also, agenda item A25, in closed session, the board took action to approve a settlement agreement with employee ID 123077 to resolve the matter of the dismissal of a permanent classified employee by permitting employee to use sick leave hours for May 2025, placing the employee on paid administrative leave from June 1st, 2025, to September 30th, 2025, and by accepting the employee's resignation effective October 1st, 2025. That concludes the report out.
Great, thank you so much. We're now moving on to B7, which is public comment. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board on any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda but is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Public comment will last approximately one hour. The time allotted to each speaker is two minutes. Should additional speaker, at the conclusion of one hour, public comment may be extended. The time allotted per speaker beyond the first hour is generally one minute. Individuals wishing to speak, please submit a WCCUSD public comment card, or if you're participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app prior to the beginning of the item on the agenda. If you are calling in by phone, press star nine. Speaking time shall not be transferred from one person to another, and there is no substitution of speakers. Speakers can also make public comments again for each discussion and action item on the agenda after staff presentations. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. The same protocols recited apply. The same protocols recited above apply. The public comment period is a safe space where diverse viewpoints may be expressed civilly without interruption or intimidation. Please listen attentively to each speaker's comment and respect their time at the podium as if it were your own. Be open to a different point of view if one is offered. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Is there any public comment?
Our first public comment is Cantica Sazano?
Good evening, my name is Cantica Sazano, and I'm an algebra teacher at Richmond High. I'm disappointed in the budget, specifically the $42 million spent on outside contractors and consultants. In my first year teaching, I worked closely with one of them called Stimulate. Yearning for any way to help my students learn math in my classroom, I eagerly agreed to work with one of their math coaches. Despite several meetings, some outside working hours, I learned nothing, and the conditions in my classroom did not improve. I learned the most about the best and effective instructional practices and classroom management from coaches and teachers that know West Contra Costa and know Richmond High. These consultants, outside contractors, don't. I urge you to prioritize Richmond community members in your budget. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris-Dash, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everybody. So, I wasn't able to hang with y'all at the last board meeting because it got really late. So, I am going to speak about the classified employees because there was like Classified Employee Week, and I really, really appreciate our classified employees. So, our custodial staff, our lead custodians is Lance, and we have Stan, and we have Junior. They are priceless, they are invaluable. Also, I have an evening custodian, and when I'm at work just late enough, I see her. I do not know her name, but I do appreciate her, and I let her know how much I value and appreciate her time. Ms. Alicia, who was our registrar, and Ms. Yvette, who was our attendance clerk, I appreciate and I value them because they also give me, they help me with calling parents because they are bilingual, so they're very helpful for me in scheduling IEP meetings. All of our campus security officers, of course, everybody knows that most of our campuses are understaffed, but these ladies and mostly gentlemen, they do, you know, their best to do what they do. So, I really, really appreciate and value them as well. One of my students is on the autism spectrum, and she has a one-to-one aide. She is wonderful, I can't get her to be a district employee. However, she is just wonderful, my student has blossomed and grown. She speaks, she volunteers, she goes to rallies now, even she has her headphones on. I mean, it has just been amazing to see the growth of my student since she's had Ms. Eileen this year. Hopefully, we can get her back next year, hint, hint. And Ms. Dixon, now, I told Ms. Dixon, she says she retiring, but I said, "I'm not going to believe you retiring until I come back to work in August and you are not in the office." But just, I want to say, you know, congratulations to Ms. Dixon. She's been in the district for over, I think, 35 years, and I just appreciate all of our classified employees. Everybody have a wonderful blessed night.
Our next public comment is Sam Clear.
Hi, my name is Sam Clear, and I'm a third grade teacher on release at Siege Elementary in the organizing chair for United Teachers of Richmond. My eight years in WCC have been filled with feelings of grief and frustration. I grieve for the students and families in WCCUSD. Students deserve to go to their community schools without experiencing this blatant level of disrespect. However, they enter classrooms with a revolving door of adults and get stashed in cafeterias and libraries. I grieve for the teachers that come to this district. They come here loving their jobs and the children and leave feeling completely depleted. Teachers get stripped of resources every year while classrooms continue to overflow with students. My frustration follows my grief. While budget deficits and the teacher shortage are blamed, other nearby districts do not face this severe level of dysfunction. Students, families, and teachers can avoid this agony and thrive with support, respect, and attention. This anti-student, anti-educator budget continues to fuel my grief and frustration. Students and families deserve better, thank you.
Our next public comment is Karen Armstead, please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Karen Armstead, I teach sped at Kennedy High, where I am an eight-year veteran. I am speaking up regarding the proposed hire of Acting Superintendent Kim Moses as head of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Indulge me in some time travel. Last February 14, which was a Friday, we at Kennedy had heard we would receive a notice in our mailbox that morning if we were assured of rehire next year. Many competent and dedicated teachers who performed functions vital on campus didn't receive notices. The Valentine's Day massacre, as we called it, touched off an agonizing month of limbo that badly destabilized our campus community. It resulted because Kim Moses, as acting superintendent and people at her direction, was acting on a discredited budget forecast. Our jobs are hard enough. We should not suffer because of bad information innately communicated. As far as I can see, Kim Moses has no place in charge of public funds. I urge the board to vote no on her hire. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Chris McLean.
My name is Chris McLean, and I teach sixth grade DLI at Dover. I've been working in the district for nine years now as a teacher, and some Dover families actually came to support us because I reached out and they know the gravity of what's happening. Our school is very successful in terms of family engagement, academic success, and student leadership. And this is in spite of what the district is doing to us, not because of it. I know what it's like to teach with 30 students in a classroom, I've done that before. It is super difficult to give every single student the care and attention they need when there's 30 kids in a class. I heard that it's proposed to have 32 students in a class. That would make it even much more difficult. I could barely physically fit 30 kids in my classroom. I don't know how I'm going to do 32 kids to fit in a classroom, walk around, have flexible seating and all that. The, the school district, the school board should not treat schools, families, students like a business. We are not a business, this is a service. We are providing an education, we are providing them with the tools they need to succeed. We should not be cutting any programs, we should not make classrooms more difficult. We should not make any of our working conditions more difficult than they need to be. We should be giving all the support, make it as easy as possible for us teachers to do our job, for schools to do their jobs, and for students to be successful in life. So, instead of treating the school district, students, and schools like a business, treat us like who we are, people, and we deserve service. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Andrea Livinghouse, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, I'm Andrea Livinghouse, speech-language pathologist in West Contra Costa. As we are closing out the school year, I'd like to take this time to uplift the mission statements outlined in the district's LCAP and ask the board as they proceed through the next few meetings of the school year to make decisions that will enable the district to make good on their promises listed in the LCAP. I'm looking forward to welcoming our new superintendent in the fall. Since I began working in West Contra Costa in 2017, I've heard a lot of claims from the district about striving for equity and championing anti-racism, but I've yet to see them fulfill these claims. The root of these failures is severe understaffing caused by inadequate compensation for classified and certificated staff. With each passing year, it still feels as though students and educators are the lowest on the district's list of priorities. I'm hopeful that the new superintendent will enable us to make progress on fully staffing our schools and ensuring student and educator safety. I'd also like to talk about the district radio station KECG. It's disappointing that the district is being dishonest about why it's been off air since February. Since your claim is that it cannot be run on Elsrito High's generators, how come it hasn't been moved to another site? It's a shame that the radio students had this abruptly stolen from them mid-year. I hope that the board can end the year on a positive note and give students and educators the assurance that our schools will be adequately funded and that we have the resources we need to provide students with the quality education they deserve. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Kim Chamberlain.
Sorry, couldn't hear. Hi, I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFPTE Local 21, SSA chapter president. We have one week, isn't that exciting? All of our students have been very successful this year. I am grateful for all of their work. I'm also grateful that they're attending school. We would not be who we are, staff, parents, community, board, cabinet, without them. Students, I know there's some of you out there, I know there's some of you in the room tonight. Thank you for attending our schools. Keep coming back, we're trying to achieve what we can. You have hard-working teachers, you have hard-working clerical staff, custodial staff. Your parents are very proud of you. Sometimes it's hard for us as parents to show it without being a little stern, but we are very proud of you. That's your job, please continue it. You are important to all of us, and I appreciate you coming to school every day. It makes everything I do, no matter what, worth it. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jean, please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Next public comment is Cristina Huerta.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cristina Huerta, and I'm a Spanish teacher at Kennedy High School. I'm here tonight to ask the board to reject the budget presented tonight. This budget is anti-student. It is unacceptable that this district is refusing to invest in creating safe and stable teaching environments. The budget needs to be rewritten in order to ensure that this district can attract qualified teachers, and our students do not have to deal with vacancy after vacancy. What is going, what is it going to take to stop spending on contractors? Why did WCCUSD decide to spend an additional $42 million on contractors, but teachers like me are constantly spending money out of our own pocket in order to have creative and engaging lessons? Why did WCCUSD spend an extra $42 million on contractors, but students are learning that their support programs are being cut? I'll give you an example. Kennedy High School has a pretty successful AP Spanish program with a passing rate for the AP exam higher than the California average. But we, yes, yes, that is, and I am very proud of those students. But we have to fight as teachers every year to keep our AP classes open. There are only two language teachers at Kennedy, and between the two of us, we have to teach between six to eight different preps. So, suddenly, AP classes are not a priority, especially if we're unable to fill them to what the district considers is an adequate number of students. But I remember a time when we used to have four language teachers at Kennedy, and we used to offer two different languages, and we didn't have to fight to keep successful, advanced classes that empower our students to pass the AP exam and earn college credit. Maybe WCCUSD can actually, you know, try to put their students first and present a budget that allows programs to grow at our sites. The first step is to rewrite the budget that is being presented tonight. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Ash Abbot.
I don't need a microphone because I am a teacher. I hope you're annoyed, I'm ready to bug you. So, all right, I'm worried, I'm worried. Go ahead and raise your hand, did someone help you learn how to read? Raise your hand, anybody help you learn how to read? Awesome, did anyone help you learn how to add and subtract? Oh, I've noticed that no one on this side has learned how to add or subtract. I'm also worried about our literary skills on this side of the aisle because we have a lot of wonderful readers over here. So, if you're struggling with reading, let me help you read. We are tired teachers. We are spending money. I have to get a babysitter to come and bug you all. These students need educators that are paid a living wage. They need educators that are ready to serve students. When you approve eight periods but don't make space for enough UTR members, what you're saying is, "You guys just need long-term subs." Now, I am grateful for the magic that those people can do, but it is not the same type of relationships that you can build over years after years, sibling after sibling, cousin after cousin. Kennedy is a small school. If I don't know your name, I know your sister, I know your brother, I know your ex, all right? If I don't know your name, I know your sister, I know your brother, I know your ex, alright? I love teaching at this school and what you are telling our kids is that they don't need to learn, that they don't need to learn how to add and subtract. Your inability to do basic math skills is communicating that they are not precious and valuable. And I am so excited to yell at people when they are adults and they don't know how to do math. When it is my kiddos, I am so excited to do jokes. But guess what? Long-term subs don't always know how to manage hard classrooms. Please bring in long-term teachers with actual living wages. Thanks for the jokes!
Our next public comment is Gabrielle Michalletti.
I want you to know the community is watching and despite what you seem to think, judging by your actions, they're not fooled by the gaslighting and deceit. You can talk in circles, say a lot of words that might sound smooth together or official when people ask questions. But that doesn't stop us from noticing you don't actually address the questions that are asked. It is blatantly obvious that what is said are simply words. You claim in public that we need to work together, yet in private, cut off all communication to ensure that everyone is operating on their own little island without support. It is clear that WCCUSD leadership is not here for the students. If you're unwilling to invest in educators and the other crucial staff that work directly with students, then you are unwilling to invest in students. We're bringing in leadership that is paid competitively while our educators fall further and further behind. You receive all the same resources from the state as our surrounding districts, but year after year say you can't make it work. Meanwhile, you're spending over a hundred and fifty percent of what other unified districts spend on outside services while skimping on educators. Yet you have the audacity to state that it is the educators, working far beyond their contract in order to fill in the gaps your leadership is creating, who are going to lead this district to the ruin you claim is always three years away. You keep saying we need to get students to come to school, raise our ADA, solve our structural deficit. Yet you sit here and cut programs, cut supports, and expect students to show up to school to classrooms with no teachers. Would you really accept that status quo for your own children or children you care about? It's time for district leadership to take responsibility and stop pointing fingers everywhere else. It's time that you create a budget that prioritizes students and know that we will never stop fighting for the schools our students deserve.
Our next public comment is Michelle Schultz.
My name is Michelle Schultz and I'm a teacher at Hannah Ranch. I've been in this district since two thousand and three and I am so tired of the dysfunction. It does not seem to matter who the board is or who the superintendent is. It is dysfunction and cuts always seem to come from the people on the front line. And I have come to the conclusion that it is all about values. Because what you do, what you propose, shows what you value. You talk about wanting equity on your webpage. You talk about raising test scores. You know what? Test scores are lousy because test scores are not appropriate in the elementary grade, but that's a whole different argument. Right now, I see my students learning because I have to work with them one-on-one after school on my own time. Where are the people? How are you getting people into this district? Because what I see are my staff. I have somebody who's on Medi-Cal. Her children are on Medi-Cal. I have a student, sorry, a teacher who is living outside this area and commuting because she can't afford it. These are awesome teachers. I get an email saying, oh, thank you for Teacher Appreciation Day. But they can't live in this district? That's a value. You are showing your values by your actions.
Our next public comment is Jeffrey Bean Jr.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear me tonight. I'm Jeffrey Bean. I teach, uh, fifth grade at Shannon Elementary. This is the end of my tenth year there. Um, I want to talk about two things tonight. First, I want to urge the school board to direct the district staff to negotiate fairly with our union. I've been to several, uh, negotiations meetings and I've been disappointed to see what the district has offered. There was a small salary increase offered, which was confusing and hard to understand. There was a increase in compensation for, uh, medical expenses from eighty percent Kaiser rates to eighty-five percent, which is very little. And then surprisingly, I heard that this last week, the district offered to increase upper elementary class size from thirty to thirty-two. Over the last ten years, we've reduced it from thirty-three, my first year in Shannon, down to thirty, which is a small, small decrease. And I find it ironic that tonight's, uh, LCAP documents state that class size reduction is one of your priorities. I don't see how that works if you're actually proposing a decrease and, uh, an increase in class size. I've had thirty-three students in my classroom. I've had twenty-seven. There is a big difference. It allows me more time to reach every student. And the reason the students stay in our district is because they have teachers and other staff members who know and care about them. And if I have twenty-seven students, each student has that much more time. Finally, I'll take my last twenty-six seconds to address the over-testing issue in our district. My fifth graders get the brunt of it since they are in fifth grade and are subject to many state tests. I know that the district doesn't have control over, over Sback and the CASP, but you do have control over IREDDI. And the fact that we spend weeks of educational time at the end of the school year when students are already burnt out from CASP is unfortunately wrong. So please change that for next year. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Our next public comment is Francisco Ortiz.
Good evening, trustees. Tonight, I speak to you not just as President of United Teachers of Richmond, but as a parent. My son is entering transitional kindergarten this fall. He has a speech IEP. And for the first time, I'm not just advocating for someone else's child. I'm handing my own over to our system. For over ten years, I've followed alongside educators, students, and families to push WCCUSD towards justice, toward equity, toward joy, toward the schools our kids deserve. And still, I find myself coming back to a question that I heard our community partners ask with raw honesty. Does the district hate kids? And more hauntingly, to what extent does the district hate kids? It's not a rhetorical question. It's a cry from families who see their children underserved, unsupported, and unseen. It's a gut check for a system that, despite all its equity plans and mission statements, continues to invest in contracts, not classrooms, in bureaucracy, not belonging. Tonight, you will hear two presentations, one on the district's proposed budget and one on the LCAP. And if you listen and watch closely, you'll hear and see two conflicting stories. The LCAP speaks of equity, student voice, support for multilingual learners, and students with disabilities. But the budget? The budget speaks a different language. It's a language of austerity, of cuts, of increasing class sizes, of declining investment in the very stuff our children rely on. It's a budget that prioritized reserves over reading, or reserves over reading, contracts over counselors, and convenience over child dignity. So I ask you, not as the union leader, but as a father, is this the best we can give my son? Is this the welcome we give all TK families? Is this the legacy you want to leave? I will continue to fight alongside our educators and our community until every child in West Contra Costa receives the education they deserve. Because I believe we can do better and we must do better. Please align your values with their dollars. Align your-
Our next public comment is Don Gosny.
Good evening. Let's have one of those one-sided conversations about communication. That is, the ability of the public and committee members to be able to communicate with you all. Five of you are the chosen ones elected by we, the people, to represent us. But how can you speak for us when you rarely speak with us? And then there are senior staff members, all the way down to school principals, who technically all work for us, we, the people. The problem we have is that it's so very difficult to communicate with almost all of you. Maybe it's because I've been working with and sometimes against board members and staff for fifty-seven years now. Or maybe it's because the community knows that I try my best to stay involved, either attending meetings or serving on committees. The bottom line is that I seem to be the go-to guy for a lot of people who are frustrated that they just can't seem to get a hold of any of you where they can get answers to their questions or even just event. Emails, texts, and phone messages seem to be ignored. Even letters and public records requests seem to fall into the district's black hole where it's as if those communications were never sent. They reach out to me because I pick up the phone. I acknowledge and respond to emails and I try my best to get answers for them. Some of the more, more popular responses I get when I do reach out is, oh, I'm busy, but I'll get back to you. Oh, I'm sending this to Ms. Jones and she can get back to you. Except no one ever gets back to me. I probably have a half dozen public records requests where I never even got an acknowledgement that they were received. Of course, you all know that you only have a week and a half before, by law, you have to respond. At least one of those, I've been waiting for nearly five years for a response that was information for a story that would make the district look really good. I will, they will sometimes make a public, very simple inquiry, but with no response. I'm compelled to submit a public records request. Now this simple request has become a monumentally time-consuming and expensive endeavor, except, of course, when you just ignore it. As you take money out of your classrooms for your parcel tax survey, if you were to listen to the responses, you would hear that there is no way they will support another tax when they don't trust the people elected or hired to represent them. And with communication comes trust. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Mark Mitchell.
Good evening, Dr. Moses, President Reckler, and Board. I wanted to congratulate the board on its vote regarding RCA, um, non-renewal of their charter. That was a, uh, the correct and just decision for students in our community. Unfortunately, um, the, the charter, of course, has appealed up to the County Board of Education and Superintendent Lynn Mackey and her staff have recommended that the charter, uh, renewal be approved. They're doing so on a very improper, uh, basis. They're, they're not considering the financial misfeasance that was the, the heart of your decision not to renew the charter. And they're saying that the, um, modest, uh, academic gains that were claimed by the charter are sufficient to renew the charter, to recommend that the board renew the charter. I want to ask that, uh, President Reckler, Dr. Moses, and each of our board members that participated in that decision, it's really important for you to reach out and speak personally or, you know, reach out an email or however you find most effective to the County Board of Education members because they are not hearing the same information that you received about the very concerning track record of this charter management organization. And just like you voted to not renew, um, the AMPS charter, uh, for RCA, Oakland Unified also, uh, recommended, you know, revoked their charter in Oakland. The Alameda County Board of Education sustained that revocation. And now we just heard this week, the Ca, the California Board of Education has issued a letter of concern for John Henry, which is another AMPS school here in Richmond. So we've got, you know, the potential to do what's right for students, for the community and for our district, but we're gonna need each of you that believe in this, um, uh, to reach out and speak to those board members. And also to ask Superintendent Mackey to call her staff back and redo the, the staff recommendation. It's not based in the law. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sky Nelson.
Good evening, Board. My name is Sky Nelson, teacher and parent. I'm thinking ahead to the upcoming election when we vote on renewal of Measure T, for which we need everybody to come together on the same page. This week, the, the United Teachers of Richmond told its members that the district overran their budget for contractors by forty-two million dollars. And we spent fifty percent more on, than other districts in the state on such costs, which don't directly benefit students. This makes me not understand what the story is. Not only the union, but the whole community needs you to explain this data from your perspective so we can align with you and, and go for this tax. I can't get it out of my head that your explanations are not to be trusted. Why is that? For instance, I received an auto-phone message saying Richmond, Elsirito, Penole, these schools are closing for the summer. Please check your email to read the full update. So I did. Although the phone message was directed at all families, my email was targeted only at my school. So I'm implicitly being separated from engagement with the whole district. Why? I learned that my school closure is due to the power outage this spring. Okay, that's reasonable. But then why are the other schools being closed? I have no idea. I'm sure I could look into it and find a good explanation. But the way the information is divvied up and parsed out seems to always serve some kind of messaging or propaganda. I don't trust what's going on. I want to. The continued impact of limiting information, encouraging disengagement across the district, leaves a nagging question in my head and probably many voters' heads too. Is this the whole story? Is there some other underlying motivation? So what am I supposed to do? Vote for more funding? I'm on your side, but I'm telling you this is not gonna work. We need people on our side. It's simple. Take the time to understand the questions being posed to you, understand the underlying concern, and communicate clearly and completely. Forty-two million in contractors' overruns. How does this fit with your perspective? Please explain.
Our next public comment is Kumie Yanagihara.
Hello, my name is Kumie Yanagihara. I'm a fourth-year science teacher at Kennedy, but I am also a first-year Master of Public Health student at UC Berkeley. And thank you. And right now, I am in a summer class called Health Policy and, Policy and Management. And in that class, we are learning about budgeting in healthcare. And one thing I'm taking away, uh, so far from this class is that a budget reveals the priorities of a system. This proposed budget shows the priorities of our school district. And by taking a look, we can see that this district prioritizes paying contractors and consultants, as proved by the fact that we spend one point five times more on contractors than other districts. We can see that this district doesn't prioritize teacher retention, as evidenced by the decreased allocation for teacher salary, despite currently being in negotiations for a new contract in which we are fighting for fair competitive salaries. We can also see that this district doesn't prioritize supporting our growing newcomer population. This budget should cover full support of the various newcomer academies we have in this district, but it doesn't. So ELMA, which is the English Language, or sorry, English Learner Multilingual Achievement Department, is left to scramble for grants to fund our small class sizes and teacher collaboration periods. This leaves our academies, our students' educations, and teacher jobs vulnerable and volatile. I felt this personally a few weeks ago when I learned that out of the four newcomer positions at Kennedy, ELMA could only secure funding for three, and it was my position that was cut. That's seventy-five students who next year will have one less class during their day that supports not just content acquisition, but also language acquisition. This is unacceptable. This is shameful, and this is unjust. Remember, a budget reveals a system's priorities. What does West Contra Costa prioritize? Thank you.
Our next public comment is Priscilla Lau. Please unmute yourself. Priscilla Lau, please unmute yourself.
Sorry, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm a parent of a TK student in the district. I'm also a speech-language pathologist in this district and I have so many questions for our district leaders and board members. Why doesn't the district value our students? Why hasn't the district been working to attract more educators and retain our current educators so that we can have fully-staffed schools? Why doesn't the district seem to want to help our students succeed? Why doesn't the district make any steps towards helping educator working conditions become more tenable so that we can actually support our students adequately? Why does the district prioritize their financial reserves instead of students? Why does the district want to increase class sizes, leading to teachers having less time to support their students? Why does the district spend so much on outside contractors instead of educators who work directly with our students? Our kids matter. Their education matters. Our educators' working conditions matter because their working conditions are our students' learning conditions. Please reprioritize. Thank you.
Our next public comment- Our next public comment is Giorgio Constantino.
Hi, members of the Board. Giorgio Constantino, Hercules parent, former Richmond High teacher, current public health microbiologist. Let's see, one item that came to my attention today in Hercules is the elementary schools, in terms of the enrollment process, some parents are being told, even though they enrolled on time, that they have to wait until the first week of school next year before they know which elementary school their child will be placed in. And that has all kinds of problems for these parents, you know, because they have to make other plans based on what school their child ends up in. So I was just wondering, is there a better process instead of waiting until the first week? I'd like to take a closer look at that. Number two, I'm asking you to be patient with me as I make multiple public records requests. And it's all geared towards helping students with disabilities. My focus is on students with intellectual disabilities. I myself, I have ADHD and also a central auditory processing disorder, and I know what it's like to be on that journey. So now I am trying to help students and also adults, you know, on this journey. And so that means taking a closer look at not just what's happening in our schools, but also the credential program itself, okay? I want to find out what's going on with, how are the teachers being prepared that are coming through that credential program? The program I went through almost twenty-five years ago, when I ended up in the classroom, I was not prepared to help students who had such challenges, okay? Remember this, not every student who has a disability has been diagnosed yet. They're in the classroom, and I think we have so many students falling through the cracks. But this is a society issue, so don't take it personal when I make my public records request. I want to help. I'm ready to chip in, okay? Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sam T. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, folks. My name is Samantha Torres. I'm glad I got a chance to talk to you again. Last week, I waited five hours to be able to make public comments. I am seeing a common thread here, and I know that in the scope of everything going on with our kids in our schools, this may seem minimal, but this really does tie into public trust and the trust of our leaders using our tax dollars to the best of their abilities. I am referring to the field access issues for the public. The public is asking to use the Kennedy High School field. I have spoken about this several times, and I am referring specifically to the Richmond United Soccer Club, who has historical access at this facility for decades and yet has been limited to only seven hours of youth despite having applied earlier than the Albany-Berkley soccer group that you've been approving to use this field that didn't care about using this field until it was remodeled. So I ask you, does the residency of one or two adults who happen to live in our district override the thousands of kids that live in Richmond, that live in WCCUSD, and have relied on Kennedy's field for youth sports? Because that's what it's been for the last year and a half. This district has decided that one or two adults as residents can override the needs of the community and the children that we serve. So I know there's a governance meeting coming up. I am looking forward to participating and helping as best as I can. My concern, though, is that even if governance is changed, even if policies are changed, how can we ensure that you're going to enforce them if you're not enforcing current policies? Thank you for your time.
And our last public comment is Tenetta Rockmore Thompson. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Tenetta Thompson. I have a son at El Cerrito High School. Just to let you all know and the Board and community know that our track team, our boys Four by One, last week at NCS broke a forty-four-year-old record. No district recognition, no recognition from our own school, including the principal, no recognition from the district A.D. This past Saturday in Clovis, California, our team placed second in the state championships in the Four by One Hundred, and there was no notice to the community. Nothing was said. Also, I want to bring up that last week you all violated the Brown Act by continuously taking closed session to close down these four schools. And really, you don't care about the students. You guys never have. I have five outstanding public records requests, and those have never and not even been complied with. Your reasoning for in compliance is because you said that there are thousands of emails, when I've gotten specific records from NCS, which shows your district's staff violating FERPA and asking for football records, okay? Asking for the addresses, which you all now created a form for me to sign so I can advocate for my football parents and my parents that their rights have been violated. You want them to sign a form? All of my community, all my parents, all my teachers ask for public business days, and they have to comply with constantly violating the Public Record Act, the Brown Act, and FERPA continuously and are harming our students. And Title IX. The Title IX violations are horrendous, especially at El Cerrito, and your Title IX coordinator does not know how to conduct an investigation. Again, you guys are not in compliance with anything, and you guys are harming not only these students.
That concludes public comment. I'm sorry, you said that that concludes public comment? Great. Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone who gave public comment. We're moving now to number eight, standing reports. And I believe we have reports from African-American Supervisory Team ASAT, sorry about that, CBOC, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and UTR, United Teachers of Richmond. Are there any others? That's it? Okay, and is ASAT here or online? Okay, great. Thank you. She's online. Ms. Alon Harrison, please unmute yourself.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Thank you. It's been a wild year. Thank you so much for your all service. We are still dealing with a lot of challenges. We know the district has made some efforts to address the racial disparities that's going on in our district with our students still being called the N-word, with our students still in the red in the indicators, and with still not good communication with our OASO office. With all that being said, we would like to meet with the superintendent and the Board president and make some efforts to start off with a better year next year, with clear communication, with clear planning for our Black and African-American students, with some input on how the programs and services that are going to be selected for our children to change the data in our district will be disseminated and not just at a few schools, because this is a district-wide problem that we face here with our data. We want to ensure that all children are being educated in our district and receiving the right services. We have had a lot of barriers this year and last year, the year before, with parents attending trainings, parents having access to the budget that's in the APACs and the ASATs. School sites have had struggles with principals not doing the APACs and needing support to start the APACs. There's been a few bright spots where the APACs have been started and there has been some engagement. But for the broader community of our school district, that's not been happening. And we really need the Board to support the district staff in seeing what are the barriers for that not happening. We don't want parents to get discouraged when they plan events and attempt to coordinate with principals and site staff, and then nothing happens. Parents volunteer their time away from things that are important to them to participate in attempting to do parent engagement at their school sites, and it's been a lot of barriers. I just need you all to understand that you all have done this a lot, pushing parents out the room. That's been your MO, but that we see the data doesn't change. I think a different approach with bringing parents more into how you guys are planning things would be a better solution than to exclude parents. I've been told, and some other parents have been told by district staff, we don't work with the parents. That's not okay. These are not you all's children. These are our children. If you guys could do better, you would. The data shows our children are failing horribly in this district. And that's by y'all data, the state's data. So I feel parent involvement and engagement can help with this area, all areas of our children's academic, and it also builds trust for parents to know that we have educators who really want to look at the whole child and not just assume that they have all the answers. Because you go to college and get a degree in education, that's one part of it. Really learning the job and knowing how to navigate and educate all kids is another part of it. And I really would like to see some difference in the district when you're communicating with parents and how you communicate with parents, getting us information in a timely manner, allowing us to participate, building a year's schedule of activities that we know is going to happen with a budget, an allocated budget with those activities. And we also want to know any monies from site and district that wasn't spent, that was identified for Black and African-American children, for their events, to be reallocated to those children and not to go back to general funds. Enough harm has been done to our children in this district. They need those resources and some more resources. Thank you. I'm complete.
Next, we have CBOC.
As reported before, one of the biggest problems the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee has faced is our inability to review the bond program financial reports in a timely fashion. It's not that the district has been withholding these reports. They just didn't have the manpower needed to process them in the limited time available. For instance, if the first day of the month is on a weekend, which is the earliest that the financial reports can be processed, the normal CBOC meeting day would be the second Monday of the month, just eight days after that weekend. And here's the kicker, though. I need those reports by the end of business on Wednesdays so I can complete the agenda packet. That's only three days to process all of this data. As we might hope, staff will not give us financial reports that have not been confirmed as being accurate. If there's even a simple error, the report has to be redone. One solution to this problem, a solution that would be considered at our next CBOC meeting on the sixteenth, will be to change our normal meeting night from the second to the third Monday of the month. This will guarantee the staff will have an additional week. I can't speak for the CBOC on this, but I'm optimistic we'll find a solution to this problem. And if you've been listening to us the past five years, filling the allotted seats on the CBOC has been very difficult. Even if you approve of our newest applicant, which is on your consent calendar tonight, we'll still be three members short of the eleven allowed. We have one application being processed right now. I spoke with another applicant this morning that should be submitting their application in a day or two, and I have a third that is promising. We can still use some help, though, so anyone that might want to serve on this important committee can find an application on the CBOC website, which is a sub-site of the district's website. In the lower-left corner, you'll find links where you'll find an application. I also encourage anyone wanting to step up to call me at 510-685-2403, 685-2403, or email me at don gosny@comcast.net. This contact information is also on our website. We're going to amp up our efforts with the five city councils and those city managers, with the two county supervisors covering the eight unincorporated parts of West County, so we can get the word out. We're going to utilize the numerous social media sites available to us, which include Facebook and Nextdoor. We're going to reach out to the four online newspapers here in Richmond, I own one of them, as well as the Two Patch newspapers covering Hercules-Panola as well as El Cerrito. We'll reach out to Rotary and Kiwanis Clubs, the PTSAs. We might even stand on a few select street corners and yell at passing cars, letting them know about the great opportunities awaiting them on the CBOC. I used to suggest smoke signals, but the sequel requirements are just too burdensome. We used to have a quarterly newsletter mailed out to every home in West County singing the praises of the bond program. It was called The Reporter. Alas, it was shut down when the district needed money for more consultants. The primary function of the CBOC is to oversee the bond program's finances. Our job is to collectively look over the shoulder of the elected Board members, the ones who make the decisions about where the money goes, and district staff, the ones who actually spend the money. Of critical importance, of course, is to make sure that the money is being spent properly and the terms of the ballot measures are adhered to. Of even greater importance, though, is ensuring that the public has faith in the Board, in district staff and in the CBOC that are actually representatives of the people. Just as with the Board and staff, if the public has no faith in their representatives on the CBOC, we're of little value to them. Whatever faith the public had in the CBOC waned a few years back when the size of the CBOC became so small that they simply could not do their jobs. Adding to that, communication between the CBOC and the public was barely existent. We're working to change that. To aid us with this effort, the District's Director of Communications, Rochelle Forrest, will be our featured guest at our next meeting, where we will discuss our desires and needs, as well as hearing what she can do to help us. We've met with her at a couple of joint meetings, but those meetings are not really designed for real discussions. They're more in the line of hearing reports. I fully expect this meeting to be very productive. We invite Board members, staff members, and members of the public to join us so they can weigh in and hear what needs to be done and what can be done. I believe we just heard a public comment about some of the difficulties with communicating with staff and the Board. Okay, if you've heard that a problem exists twice within a few minutes, even if it's coming from the same person, maybe it's something to listen to. Even though it's not as sexy as going over financial reports and hearing about the projects, the CBOC has several very important housekeeping projects we're working on. Bylaws. About fifteen years back, I drafted the first set of bylaws. And even though we have a Board policy governing the broad strokes overseeing the CBOC, we need a set of bylaws to govern the day-to-day business. We can't discern what happened, but after I termed out about a dozen years back, the CBOC bylaws just got themselves changed. There's no record of the CBOC acting to amend them. They just miraculously changed all by themselves. Bylaws are a fluid set of rules that need to be updated and amended as necessary. The process of amending may be a hundred different sections would take several many months of CBOC meetings devoted solely to this task, a much-
Thank you, and our final standing report is from UTR, United Teachers of Richmond.
Good evening again, Board and community. For the first time in seven months, interim Superintendent Dr. Moses sat in the same room with UTR leadership. It wasn't here at this Board meeting or any other Board meeting, but it was at the final bargaining session of the year. We couldn't get any semblance of meaningful financial explanation from our interim CBO after months of negotiations, so perhaps we could expect more clarity and solutions from our interim superintendent. We didn't get solutions. We got a forty-minute lecture. We were told that West Contra Costa Unified School District cannot prioritize student success, that the district cannot ensure school stability, that the district cannot afford to value educators who show up for students every single day. We were told that the status quo is the only option. Let me say this plainly. Our students deserve the best. The status quo is not what's best for students. The status quo is what's driving educators out of this district. And the status quo is a choice, a choice that this district keeps on making. At that same bargaining session, we were told that if we quote "work together," we can find common solutions. But what management means by working together is really accept less. It means bending the knee to a system that underfunds classrooms while inflating central office contracts and handing out consulting deals like candy. WCCUSD leadership offered us $600,000 across 1,500 UTR-represented educators. Let's put that into perspective. That's roughly the same amount this district is spending on two superintendent contracts for two people. Two administrators, one workforce of 1,500 educators, same budget investment. What message does that send? We were also told that WCCUSD intends to increase class sizes in elementary school. Increase them. While teacher vacancies are at crisis levels, while our most vulnerable students struggle without consulting- While teacher vacancies are at crisis levels, while our most vulnerable students struggle without consistent support. And if you look at the patterns, we can see that for four straight years, our district has failed to meet the state mandated minimum requirement for classroom compensation. We spend one and a half more times on consultants than nearby districts. We rank near the bottom in teacher pay, even compared to districts with fewer resources. So let's be honest, this isn't about resources or money. This is about priorities. Neighboring districts with identical funding formulas, who have similar working class communities, have made different choices. They've chosen to invest in classrooms. They've chosen to respect their educators, and they've chosen stability. Our district chooses chaos. And now, for the second time in three years, UTR educators will start the school year without a contract. That's not just a bargaining failure, it's a failure of governance. You, our elected board, must ask yourselves, are you setting up the next superintendent for success or failure? Are you willing to continue down this path of delay, denial, and deception? Or will you demand a budget that centers students and stabilizes our workforce? Because while the district diders, UTR is organizing. We're building site by site, zone by zone, and we are ready to escalate. This fight is not just about wages. It's about whether this district has the moral will to become what our students deserve. We do. UTR has a plan. We have the data. We have the people. And we have the power. We will not wait another seven months. We will not settle for crumbs from a table that we have built. And we will not stop until we win the schools our students deserve. Boy, I got another minute? Cool. Um, also, please remember that the medical billing, um, could also be done through the, if you're, or the medical billing could be done through that counseling, um, effort that was, uh, previously headed by superintendent or associate superintendent Summer Sigler. Um, we also need that mental health grant, um, that job description to be, um, uh, approved by the board. And, um, that's all for today, so we'll see you in the fall. Take care, everyone.
Thank you to everybody who gave standing reports. We're now moving on to number nine, resolution number two, four, two, five, dash, nine, two, LGBTQ plus Pride Month 2025. Ms. Forrest, I believe that's your item.
Yes, thank you, and good evening. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education declares the month of June as Pride Month and encourages schools to fly the pride flag from June 1st, 2025 to July 1st, 2025. And be it further resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education directs the superintendent and all district staff to support lessons and activities that engage students in meaningful learning, research, and writing about our LGBTQ plus students and families.
Thank you so much. Is there any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Great, thank you. Are there any board questions on the item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
President Reckler, I did have a change I wanted to propose.
Great, thank you. Go right ahead.
Thank you so much. Um, I did want to change the word encourages, schools to fly, to directs, schools to fly, the pride flag in the resolution to our schools.
Does anybody have an issue with that? Okay, so we'll, are you making a motion with?
Yes, is it okay if I make a motion with that change?
Okay, great. Uh, is there a second on that?
Smithville seconds.
Great, so moved by Gonzalez Hoi, seconded by trustee Smith Foltz. Any further comments? If not, we'll go to the votes. Student trustee Espinoza, Jr.
Yes.
Student trustee Barom.
Yes.
Hernandez is absent. Barcanana.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Foltz.
Smith Foltz, yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes you now, this really with one absence. Thank you. We are now moving to B10, agenda review and adoption. Does the board have anything that they would like to change? Doc, go ahead. Yes. E3, which is the superintendent's removal, moving that up to E1. Got that. And then Dr. Moses, is there a, um, I think you were removing something?
Yes, thank you, President Reckler. Um, staff are requesting that we table the public hearing for special education, the annual service plan, item number E1.
Absolutely. Oh, no, I'm sorry about that. You're right. E1, got it. Yes, okay.
E1 to bring back at the next board meeting.
Okay. Are there any other changes? Okay, seeing none, we will, uh, accept the agenda with, uh, the superintendent's contract. E3 moved up to the first action item, removing E1. And I'm sorry that I interrupted you on that. I got confused. Okay, good. So we'll proceed with that. And then we will now move to C consent. Is there anything that board members would like to remove from consent? I am removing C6 fundraising for a brief discussion. Is there anything else that needs to be removed? Then we will approve consent with E6. I'm sorry, C6 fundraising removed for brief discussion. Terrific. Now we are up to D. Oh, I'm sorry. If we could go back to consent for just one thing, uh, on C12, uh, the CBOC applicant, Mr. William Claus, it's C L A U S, no E at the end of his name. That's just a small correction on that item. And with that, if we could go to number D, superintendent communication. Dr. Moses, all you.
Thank you, President Reckler. If we could bring up the slide presentation. I want to give an appreciation to the communications team as we wait for the presentation to, uh, upload. Uh, their hard work and support in ensuring that our messages are shared with the public and that they are highlighting our district are much appreciated. So thank you to the comms team for your hard work on supporting the superintendent report outs. All right. Uh, so with that said, we'd like to share some of the information we've, uh, we weren't able to report at the last meeting. So some of this information we had hoped to bring you last week, but we're going to bring it to you this week, just the same. Next slide. We start our superintendent's report in memoriam. Um, we'd like to recognize the contributions of a special member of our school community who has passed away. Anna Blackman was our retired deputy superintendent for West Contra Costa Schools. She died on Monday, May 12th, 2025. Anna began her teaching career in 1966 as a math teacher at Juan Crespi Junior High School, which is now Betty Reed Soskins Middle School. Eventually, she served as the department chair and she implemented one of the district's most innovative math programs. Her leadership journey continued as dean at Kennedy High School, vice principal at Helms Middle School and Richmond High, and principal of El Cerrito High School. She later held key administrative roles at the district office, including director of secondary education, associate superintendent for curriculum, and ultimately deputy superintendent retiring in the year 2000. After retirement, Anna remained deeply engaged in education, serving on various committees and as a member of the council of elders. She is remembered for her profound impact on students, families, and colleagues, and for staying in touch with many former students through Facebook. Anna is survived by her son Benjamin Falls, granddaughter Courtney Blackman, and niece LaShawna Foster. Please join me in a moment of silence for Anna Blackman. Thank you. In this next slide, we'd like to honor and, uh, recognize our classified staff. Um, the week of May 18th was Classified School Employees Week, and we proudly celebrated the work of our classified employees, recognizing the incredible contributions and the dedication that they bring to our schools and support with the running of our schools each and every day. Our classified staff are the backbone of the district. They serve essential roles such as office staff, custodian, instructional aides, food service workers, campus safety officers, bus drivers, technology specialists, and many other roles across our schools and district offices. Their hard work, reliability, and care directly impact the success and the well-being of our students. And we are deeply grateful for their unwavering commitment and the vital support that they provide for our school communities every day. We honor you and we thank you for all that you do, classified staff of West Contra Costa. Next slide. We have a very special staff member here today that we'd like to honor. And I'd like to ask the, the board if we can, um, stop for a photo after the presentation with her. We have with us tonight Equator Sullivan. And Equator Sullivan is celebrating 51 years of service at West Contra Costa Unified School District. Um, now let's give her a round of applause. Thank you. Ms. Sullivan began her career in 1973 as an instructional aide. She worked at several elementary sites and Ms. Sullivan transferred in 2010 to become a special education payer professional. This is her 15th year at Mira Vista School. She loves working with K to 8 students and she has served us for 50-plus years. So I want to ask Ms. Sullivan if you'll stand so that we, everybody can recognize you. Thank you. And at the conclusion of our report, we'd like to take a photo with Ms. Sullivan and the board. So, uh, stay where you are, Ms. Sullivan. We'll come get you momentarily after the presentation. Yes. Thank you. If you can just sit right there, we'll be right with you, Ms. Equator. Wonderful. Thank you. Uh, so in this next slide, we want to get through just the presentation, um, here. The exceptional special needs student spring dance occurred on Saturday, May 3rd. It was a special event for our students held at Pinole Valley High School. We want to shout out our special education department and all of the staff and parents and community members who made this event possible for our students. This is the third consecutive year that we've had this event, uh, especially for our special needs students. And it's a truly magical night and we're appreciative for the experience, not just for our students, but for their families and our staff as well. Next slide. Cookies for Cameron held an, oh, they held an open house to host prospective families and to share the great offerings of their program with the community at large. It was a huge success. Over 250 people joined the Cameron community and learned about the program and engaged together, um, in, in unity, learning about those programs. So we want to thank the Cameron staff and community for coming together and sharing, um, their collective effort to support our schools, our students, and our program. Next slide. Partnering with our community. Um, this year, uh, we're celebrating our second year partnering with the Richmond Outdoors Coalition. And the students from Verdi K8, Nishtrum, De- Dejane, and Richmond High participated in these programs. And in included, um, walking field trips and the watershed project at the Miller Knox Tilden Park. So congratulations to students who got the opportunity to participate there. Next slide. Mentoring and science at Dejane Middle School. We want to highlight this special program for our students in the after-school program. Um, they are partnering with the Oakland nonprofit that works to increase the number of underrepresented, um, groups in health, as health professionals. So this was a great opportunity. Thank you for that at Dejane. Next slide. Held Harding Elementary held a Maker Fair. And the Maker Fair, uh, was a community STEAM night. It was organized by the fourth grade, uh, team at Harding and supported by the PTA. So we want to appreciate them and share the great, uh, work that they are doing to promote STEM at Harding Elementary. They had over 400 attendees, the bit, their biggest turnout for this event. Next slide. We have a winner, the microgravity contest, um, uh, that took place at, um, I'm forgetting where, uh, across our district. This winner is from Coramatsu, Coramatsu Middle School. She also took first place in the Contra Costa County Science and Engineering Fair earlier this year. So we want to honor Shriya Seshia. Congratulations. I don't know if she's here tonight. Beautiful. Next slide. Lincoln Elementary enjoyed Camp Mamak. This was the third year in a row that, uh, fourth and fifth graders from Lincoln attended the Mosaic Project. It's an organization dedicated to giving students community-building skills and tools to create inclusive, peaceful environments. So thank you, Lincoln community, for sharing that with us tonight. Next slide. Graduation season is here. Visit the district's Facebook and Instagram pages to see lots of, um, pictures from our events. We've had our reclassification ceremony, our African American Students of Honor ceremony. We had the Kente cloth celebration with black graduation. And middle college hailed their 33rd commencement. Next slide. We want to highlight middle college, high school for making history. Uh, their results continue to impress their class of 2025 graduates. We want to announce that 98% of the middle college graduates earned their AA degrees as they earn their high school diploma. Great job. Yes, to highlight that. Also, 95% of them earned a STEM certificate focusing on science, technology. Science and technology. 100% of those graduates plan to continue their education at a two-year or four-year college institution. And they had two valedictorian and two salitorians due to the, um, high academic achievement of those students. So congratulations, middle college. They were named a 2025 California distinguished school. And we are so very proud of that program, those students and that staff. Great job. Next slide. We want to remind you of upcoming graduations. Um, next week or actually, uh, this week, Friday, we are kicking off our, our, uh, traditional high school graduations. And we want to appreciate the graduations that we've had such thus far. Please consult the list and join us and join in the celebration of these students and their teachers and their hard work graduating our district this year. Next slide. We have announced the temporary closure of some of our high schools during the summer season. Closing these sites during this period allows for scheduled maintenance and facility improvements. Unfortunately, it does mean that we need to limit and restrict access to these sites. But in order not to interrupt our, interrupt the academic school year and the teaching and learning of our students, this is the time that we must engage in these improvements and also in, um, enact, uh, required closures as, as deemed necessary by our district. Uh, the closed campuses include Richmond High School, Kennedy High School, El Cerrito High School, Indiana High School. We are working extremely hard to ensure that the disruptions to these closures, disruptions due to these closures are minimal for our students and community. And, uh, we will share more information as soon as it becomes available. Next slide. We also want to just add that, uh, the participation and engagement of our community and our parents is extremely important to the progress of our- of our community and our parents is extremely important to the progress of our district. We invite you each time we have this presentation to join our committee meetings, our parent advisory councils, and the meetings that are held at your school site. So if you haven't been able to attend a meeting this year, there is still one, two more meetings left. The CAC meets tomorrow night. That's our Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, and the CBOC meets June 16th. We invite you to those meetings, and please continue to consult the calendar and consider joining us next year during these opportunities. Next slide. That concludes the presentation. And at this time, we are so very excited to again welcome up Ms. Equator Sullivan, and the board will come down and take a picture with her to honor her 51 years of service.
The board will be right back. We're going to the floor for a picture. Okay, if I could call everybody back for the next item, please? Okay, I believe we're ready to start the next item. We're moving now to E3. E3 is to recommend approval of superintendent's employment agreement. So the board has engaged in exhaustive search for a new permanent superintendent and has chosen an individual who will lead our district in achieving student success, employee engagement, and fiscal solvency. Ms. Cheryl Cotton, would you like to come up to the podium, please? California's transparency laws, the Brown Act, Government Code 54950, applies to local agencies, including school districts, and requires the employment agreements involving local agency executives, including the superintendent and other high-level administrators, to be approved in open session at a regular board meeting after an oral summary of the salary, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits. The board is asked to approve an employment contract with Cheryl Cotton to serve as the superintendent of the district. The employment agreement is attached to the agenda item online for review. The employment agreement provides the contract term is for the following time period, June 20, 2025, to June 30, 2028, slightly more than three years. The superintendent's annual salary is $325,000 with health and welfare benefits consistent with certificated management employees of the district. That is my required, very boring oral, required oral release. And now, do any board members have questions? May I? Oh, does he have a question? Go ahead. Thank you for watching that.
Thank you, Clerk Ayana. I apologize, President. I got too excited. I was ready to move to a motion. So I apologize. I don't have a question. I will put it down for now.
Okay, well, we can move to a motion and then take, well, let's take public comment first, and then we'll do that. Is there any public comment on the item?
Yes, our first public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. And Ms. Cheryl Cotton, welcome back. Welcome back. Welcome back. Look forward to, granted, they haven't officially, I guess, voted yet, but I look forward to your leadership. We've worked together over the years, and so I am pleasantly surprised, kind of halfway in shock. But when it comes down to it, welcome back. Welcome back. Welcome back, and just wishing all the best for you as you embark on this journey from this level. Everybody have a one-fine-blessed night.
Is there any other public comment?
Our next public comment is Carolyn Wissinger. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, hello. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carolyn Wissinger. I am the mayor of the city of El Cerrito, and I just wanted to give the biggest congratulations to soon incoming Superintendent Cheryl Cotton. I could not be more proud. I have been supporting Cheryl the same way that she supported me when I was working in the district. And so I, you know, I really said during the search that I hope that we get someone who's homegrown, who is from our district, knows that the politics across our diverse school district, and I could not be more proud and look forward to working with you in the future as the superintendent. Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Karina Ponse. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to say, welcome back. You saw me grow in this district, and I really, really, I'm excited that you're coming back, and you've seen how much more I've grown, because you saw me when I was a secretary, a clerk, an after-school coordinator. You gave me my first teaching job as a teacher in the district, and you pushed me through it. And so now, as a lead counselor, I want to say all of the school counselors and college and career counselors, welcome you, and we can't wait to work and collaborate with you and, yeah, push more initiatives for our students for mental health and to have higher graduation rates. So we're excited to continue this partnership with you. Welcome back.
Our next public comment is Willie Robinson. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, good afternoon, President. Chair of the trustees, Ruckler, I'm confused. I'm getting a little anxious here, hearing Cheryl Cotton's name as our incoming superintendent. Obviously, she'll be voted on, but to the rest of the honorable board members and the interim superintendent. I am president of the Richmond branch in ACP and wanted to take this opportunity to suppress my surprise and excitement about Cheryl coming back to us. Hi, Cheryl, welcome. We pray that everything goes well with you coming on with the vote, and we're looking forward to working with you to have better outcomes in our district for our students. God bless you.
Our next public comment is Dr. Keisha Pryor. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just want to say, Ms. Cotton, the women of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated are extremely excited and proud to welcome you back to the district. And Dr. Moses, thank you so much for your service, and I am super, super excited. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Alon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Hey, I am so glad to hear that you will be leading our school, and I look forward to working with you and the other parents in our district with you, working with you. So glad to know you're here. I feel we're in some good hands. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Fantastic. Okay, Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy, would you like to make your motion now?
No, I want to go ahead of him. I want to motion. He can be my second, though.
Well, I'm sorry. I was recognized first, so I will fight you for the honor. I'm just kidding. I will let Trustee Smith-Folds have the honor, and I would love to second.
Perfect, because I was about to put you on mute, friend. I motion that we recommend the approval of Superintendent Cheryl Cotton. I am complete.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Trustee Smith-Folds and a second by Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy. Do we have comments from the board?
Thank you. First, congratulations. I am so happy that you are the permanent superintendent. I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you. Thank you, Dr. Moses, for being an amazing interim superintendent. Thank you, Superintendent Cotton, for coming on and continuing the good work of the district. I really appreciate it, and I look forward to working with you, and I am excited to see where we can go as a team in this district. So once again, congratulations, and I look forward to all the great work that we are going to do. I would caution the community like I did before. Don't put no cape on any black woman. We are human. We are human, and we deserve all the grace and the grace and wonderful emotion that everyone else does. We are no one superhero, but we are super at everything we do. But don't put no cape on us. I am complete.
Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, go ahead. I know, I'm looking to the sky like it's heaven.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you. I just wanted to say a couple things. I got the privilege of working alongside with Ms. Cotton when she served as Director of Human Resources a few years back in our district. I'll tell everybody that she is someone I know who has high integrity with a proven record of caring about our students, our staff, and families. I saw her work incredibly hard to be equity-focused and student-centered always. She's also a mom of wonderful graduate from our district who served on our board when President Ruckler, Trustee Smith-Folds, and I first joined the board, and he's just amazing. And I think it's a reflection of her as a mom and as a leader. And I just want to finish by saying that I strongly believe that we needed someone who truly understood us, that wouldn't take a few years to get to know our schools, someone who knows the areas of growth as well as areas of strength from a place of love and true commitment. I know Ms. Cotton will create a wonderful needed change for our district, and I'm just so excited. She already lives in our district, and she's coming back home, which I'm just so truly thankful that you are making that commitment back to us, Ms. Cotton. And I also want to finish by thanking you, Dr. Moses, as well, for taking on this huge commitment. I remember when you, Trustee Smith-Folds, and I talked I remember when you, Trustee Smith-Folds, and I talked to you in that little back room at the Anza High School and, and asked, and we talked to you first about this. And I just want to say thank you because it is, as we know, not an easy job whatsoever, not one I would do. It's too late for you to back up, Ms. Cotton, by the way. But not one I would do, and I just want to thank you for your commitment of doing the work last few months.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank Ms. Cotton for choosing us. I think that's something that we really instilled in making sure that the person who we hired on was committed, was part of this community, and could be supportive, but also is in line with some of the vision that we have for West Contra Costa. I haven't had the privilege of working with you. And I am also a new trustee, so I welcome you and hope that we can solidify our team and that we could get on the road to better outcomes, educational outcomes, to bring closure to some of the hardships that we've had within the district and to really building ourselves up to be able to really embrace that partnership that we're looking for with our parents, with our students, and with especially our unions. So thank you very much and welcome. And thank you, Ms. Moses. I really appreciate the guidance that you have given me and the help and support throughout this turning point as well.
And I'll close it out by thanking you and welcoming you home to the WCCUSD. I look forward very much to working with you, learning from you, and seeing what we can do to lift our students and ensure student success. I also want to thank Dr. Moses for your work. I've really enjoyed working with you, learned a ton. I think we had a few really good talks and were able to brainstorm, bounce things off each other. I don't know how you felt, but I enjoyed it. And yeah, it was, it was very, it was very hard. You know, we had a lot, board had a lot of things to do, but I appreciate your openness and your, your outrage. So thank you very much. Okay, any other further questions? And with that, we will go to the vote. Student trustee Espinosa Jr.?
Yes.
Student trustee Barone?
Yes.
Clerk Agnana?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Trustee Smith-Folds?
Absolutely, yes.
And I am a yes. The vote passes unanimously with one absence. Welcome home, Superintendent Cotton. Do you have any words that you'd like to share? And push, push a little face. Oh, I think they got it for you.
I got it.
Good, great.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the board. Thank you to Dr. Moses, interim superintendent. Thank you to the cabinet, to, I'll step back a little bit. Thank you to just everyone. I am so glad to be home. I am a graduate of West Contra Costa. I am a former parent of West Contra Costa. I live in West Contra Costa. This is home, and I am so excited. I see our beauty. I see our strength. I see our assets within this district. And I also know that there are some things that we have to work on that are imperative, and I am ready for that work. I bring all of, that's okay. Okay, perfect. I'm bringing all of me into this work, all of my experiences as an educator, as a teacher, as a principal, as a, a human resources administrator, as a state administrator focusing on curriculum instruction and assessment. All of me is coming into this work, and I am so glad to be home. I will close and just say that we are one, West Contra Costa, and I am looking forward to our work together. Thank you.
Would we like to go down and take a picture? Yes, we would. The board will be right back. We're going to take a picture. Okay, we're just going to take one minute and get everybody back settled. Okay, and we are back. Our next item is E2. Approve the combination of Kennedy High School Critical Needs Project Budget with the Kennedy High School Modernization Budget. Ms. Payne.
Yes, good evening, board, community. Tonight, we're asking the board.
Can you hold for just one second? Is it possible to turn her volume up a little bit here on the stage? I don't know about anybody else, but I'm struggling a little bit to hear her. Can you test?
Yes, how does it sound now?
That's better. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Good evening, board, superintendents, and cabinet and community. Tonight, we're asking the board for approval of combining the Kennedy Critical Needs Budget with the Kennedy Modernization Budget. Next slide. So the 2016 Facilities Master Plan approved the Kennedy Critical Needs Budget. And at that time, that budget was to relocate the 100 and 200 building into the portables. At the time that this budget and project was approved, we didn't know that we would have Measure R in the future. Next slide. This next slide shows how now that we have Measure R and the board has approved the Kennedy High School Modernization Project, these two projects are happening at the same time and in the same space. And so you can see here, there are some green. There's kind of a green perimeter boundary that identifies where the new building's going to go that's part of the modernization project. That's our new build. And you can also see in orange, those are the buildings that are scheduled for demolition this summer. And so now that we have the Critical Needs Project taking place in the same space as the Modernization Project, we're recommending that the board combine these budgets into a single Kennedy High School budget. Next slide. Which not only will provide for easier management of this project, but also create significant efficiencies for us that couldn't have been contemplated at the time when the budgets were originally approved by the board. And so with that, we ask and recommend that you approve combining the Kennedy Critical Needs Project Budget with the Kennedy High School Modernization Project, since the scope of work is happening concurrently and in the same space to create efficiency and overall project savings.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, I have a question. When you say efficiencies, would you be able to specify what the efficiencies are? And if there are dollar savings, would you be able to estimate those?
Absolutely. So the 2016 Facilities Master Plan Project envisioned the demolition of the 100 and 200 building, but then it also didn't anticipate any other dollars. So that space would have needed to be, site work would have been done there. Finishing would have been done there because that is off of the major street. Well, now that we're building the new building essentially in that footprint, doing that work is no longer needed because as soon as the demolition is taking place, we're now doing that underground work. And so that's where it really creates some efficiencies and makes it very difficult from a project management standpoint to really keep those projects separate since they're essentially happening concurrently, which will also save us some time with a project. And anytime you can save time on a project, you're definitely saving dollars. So it's not only the reduction of scope that's no longer needed, but also the savings of time doing it concurrently.
Got it. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Does anybody else have questions? We'll go to public comments. Is there any public comments on the item?
There's no public comment.
Okay, great. I'll accept a motion on this item. Hang on a second. I just lost it. So the motion would be to approve the combination of Kennedy High School Critical Needs Project Budget with the Kennedy High School Modernization Budget. Well, I'll go ahead and move it. Is there a second? It is. Hold on. Is that me? No, not me. Okay, so moved by Agnana, moved by Ruckler, seconded by Agnana. Anything else? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll go to the votes. Student trustee Espinosa Jr.?
Yes.
Trustee Barone?
Yes.
Hernandez is absent. Clerk Agnana?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Trustee Smith-Folds?
Smith-Folds, yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes unanimously with Hernandez absent. Okay, we've finished all action items. We're moving now to discussion. F1, Public Hearing, 2025, 2026, Local Control Accountability Plan. Okay, so I need to open a public hearing on this item. So I'm going to open a public hearing, make my introduction. We'll have staff do their presentation. We will answer board questions. We will have public comment on the item. And then we will continue with any board comment, and then we will close the item. So I am opening the public hearing for the 2025, 2026 Local Control Accountability Plan. The time is 8:38 PM. The Local Control Accountability Plan is a three-year plan that describes the goals, actions, services, and expenditures to support positive student outcomes that address state and local priorities. The LCAP represents the district's comprehensive plan of goals, actions, and services, and leverages resources to meet those goals to improve student outcomes. From here, I will turn it over to district staff for their presentation.
Great, thank you. Good evening, President Ruckler, Clerk Agnana, trustees, and members of our community. Tonight, we are excited to share our 2526 LCAP as part of our annual public hearing. Each year, we update the plan to reflect on progress, refine strategies, and ensure resources are in place to support our student needs. And this year is an update of year one of our three-year plan and deepens our focus on continuous improvement and equity-driven decision-making. Next slide. So before we dive into the details of the plan, I want to note that the full annual update and the complete 2526 LCAP are available in its entirety to the public. This includes all actions, strategies, and associated budget allocations as well as the updated metrics and reflections on the progress. To support accessibility and transparency, and because the full LCAP is 253 pages, we've also prepared an executive summary available both in English and in Spanish so that our educational partners can easily access the key components of the plan. Attached on the agenda, you'll also find the written feedback from our DL caps and PAC committees alongside the district responses that explained which recommendations were incorporated and how they shape the current plan. And tonight's presentation really provides a high-level overview of implementation effectiveness and focuses only on the proposed changes for the upcoming year. And an appendix is also included on the deck that I'm presenting, which contains the supporting data to inform effectiveness and other resources like our acronym list that's really there to make sure that that educational lingo that we often use is available for the public. Next slide. So this year, we've engaged in a robust and inclusive LCAP development process. We began with a session focused on the review of each LCAP goal implementation and completed both the data that supported the effectiveness, and were able to do this in two rounds of review for each goal. These sessions really allowed us to dig into the data and begin shaping what the revisions were going to look like. And in addition to that, we also hosted two LCAP town halls to ensure that all of our educational partners, families, staff, and community members had an opportunity to directly share their insights. And we added a session for our site leaders and central office leaders and labor partners to provide us inputs. And then we went back to those partners to make sure that we got the feedback right. So today, we're host, holding the hearing, and then the approval of the LCAP will come back with the budget for the scheduled Board of Education meeting on June 25. Next slide. So like you heard at our last board meeting, this year, our partnership has felt much more inclusive and impactful. And this is really for ours attributed to the expansion of the DL caps meetings that went from six sessions last year to 13 sessions. that went from six sessions last year to 13 sessions. And we're really proud to have increased the number of meetings that achieved quorum, that expanded the membership to 17. And as was presented again at our last board meeting, you saw a lot more engagement at the cabinet level with Associate Superintendent Summer Sigler, deepen collaboration on all meeting agendas, our program directors having developed detailed data and from presentations for each meeting. And it also included active participation from myself, from Dr. Moses as the interim superintendent, and of course, Summer prior to her leave. And this really demonstrates that shared leadership commitment to our authentic partnership and accountability. Next slide. So as part of our LCAP development process, directors, program directors reviewed the data, the feedback from the PACs. And at the May principals' meeting, we held a dedicated session and did a consultancy protocol for directors to review with principals the proposed changes. And this really allowed for a deep discussion and reflection on how the updated strategies align to site-level needs and realities. And this feedback directly informed the final revisions that you're seeing today to make sure that we're being really responsive and grounded on what's happening at schools. Next slide. So you can see here that we received a total of 47 recommendations from our PACs. Of those, 19 were fully included in the LCAP. 16 were incorporated with some modification to better align with district priorities or available resources. Nine recommendations were already part of existing actions, and we are continuing them into this new academic year. And three recommendations were not able to be included at this time due to budget constraints. Next slide. So let's begin our review of our goals. We're making strong progress in Goal One, Authentic Engagement. In Year One, chronic absenteeism has declined by 6.2%, putting us on track to meet our three-year reduction goal. We're really proud that our tiered fidelity and ventori walkthroughs, the TFI, happened at all sites and expanded PBIS coaching also occurred at school sites. Suspension for African-American students did decrease from 2.7 to 2.3. And other means of correction also increased by 83%. So that's exactly what we want to see. However, disproportionality remains a concern, and the data still reflects that our Black students and our foster youth students have a significantly higher suspension rate when compared to other students. And this continues to underscore the need for stronger early interventions and restorative practices. Next slide. So for full transparency, we wanted to make sure to include the feedback that informed our work received from all of our educational partners. So this is PACs across the board from our students and our principals. And they shared the cleared priorities that were aligned to Goal One. There's a strong support for increased mental health staffing and funding for a district grant writer. Comments also emphasize the need for better access to instructional materials in connection to home and the effective use of parent square and stronger site-based art programs. Additional feedback also called for improved transportation options, streamlined volunteer processes, clear district systems, and better tools to address chronic absenteeism. And while it's outside of the scope of the LCAP, concerns did come up around community schools transparency and the need for more site-level autonomy in the feedback. Next slide. So we tried to follow the same format and really contain all of the pieces as part of the LCAP update and the new changes proposed in a single page. So here, all the strategies within Program 3010, which support positive school culture and climate, were implemented as planned this year with no material changes to the program budget. As part of our continuous improvement process, each strategy has been evaluated using the effectiveness indicators that you can see on the top right part of the page or the screen. Green means that the strategy is on track to achieve our three-year goal. Yellow means that it's not effective but shows promise with adjustments. And red indicates that it's not meeting the goals and needs significant revision. And so you can see that three strategies within this program are not yet effective. They're labeled yellow. And three strategies are on track to meet the three-year goal. And again, the full LCAP of all of our strategies are listed and attached in the full LCAP. But based on our needs assessment and the input, we're proposing the following changes to the strategies for 25-26. Strategy Two, for social-emotional learning. We're really wanting to expand our evidence-based social-emotional learning curriculum and really focus on professional development of our climate teams. And as a result of the feedback we received from our students, we want to make sure that those plans really integrate Brain Breaks and Fun Fridays to be able to build focus and motivation for our students, creating more connective, responsive learning environments. For Strategy Four, Climate Coaching, we're really looking to reduce suspension disproportionality and improve safety. So we want to make sure that we're providing our sites with direct coaching around PBIS, restorative practices, trauma-informed care. And new elements include feedback from our PAC around creating expectations-based assemblies for students and staff, teacher workshops on addressing harmful language, creating visible behavior norms throughout campuses from elementary to secondary, and doing a district rollout of our anti-slur policy. For Strategy Five, Attendance and Engagement, our goal continues to be to improve attendance by 2%. But we want to make sure that we're doing a tiered outreach-focused support to make sure that our attendance technicians are really centralizing data systems to make sure that we're tracking both the trends and interventions and are using a needs analysis to do so. We also want to introduce, based on feedback, programs that celebrate improved attendance and to do so consistently throughout the school sites. For Strategy Six, Reducing Disproportionality, we want to make sure that our principals, both our elementary and secondary principals and our assistant principals, participate in a monthly professional learning community, focus on analyzing that suspension data and implementing alternatives to suspension. And we want to make sure that our high-risk students are proactively referred to our care or cost teams to make sure that we're consistently and equitably providing both intervention and are doing so with our discipline practices as well. For Strategy Seven, Strengthening Authentic Engagement Through Teacher Capacity. This is an added strategy around smaller class sizes and how they allow our elementary teachers to build stronger relationships with their students and families. This strategy is backed by research that links smaller class sizes to improved engagement, attendance, and academic outcomes. And it's funded through our Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant. For Strategy Eight, it's also a new strategy around safety staff support. To support safe learning environments, we're allocating dedicated safety staff both at elementary and secondary. And so for elementary schools, yard supervision really supports this. And at secondary schools, campus safety specialists help maintain secure and welcoming campuses. And really, together, these changes and revised strategies reflect what we've learned and heard. And our goal is to build school environments that feel safe, inclusive, and centered on belonging and success for our students. Next slide. You'll also notice that Goal One has the most changes because we received the most feedback about Goal One. Under Program 3120, Parent Engagement and Volunteer Outreach, all strategies were implemented as planned and no material changes were made to the budget. These three strategies are on track to meet the goal and three require some refinement. For Strategy One, we want to expand the use of Survey Monkey and Mentimeter to support multilingual outreach, to reduce that staff need for processing time of feedback, and to improve our volunteer access. And we feel that these tools are really going to support engagement and digital literacy. And we've tried out some of them this year with a lot of success. For Strategy Two, we want to make sure that we're focusing on parent capacity building through district-wide workshops, resource centers, and supports like ELD classes and digital literacy training to strengthen our family-school partnerships. For Strategy Four, we really want to continue to build on the efforts made this year with DLCAPs and want to include the recommendation of ensuring that our LCAP-funding staff is trained to exactly what they're intended to do as part of the LCAP as well as work towards their goal and metrics throughout the year. For Strategy Five, we want to build on the parent buildup rights and aim on rolling out a toolkit and training support consistent at every school site and make sure that we have a really equity-centered implementation across all of our school sites. And for Strategy Eight, we really want to expand our strategic communications. This is based from feedback from DLCAPs and from our DLI PAC. We want to add a dual-language webpage that's dedicated to supporting and promoting our DLI programs. We want to enhance parent square usage by creating clear training for that two-way communication platform that we use. And we also want to incorporate the great feedback that we got last week about leveraging our parent leaders to be able to support training of parents square across our families. And these updates really aim to deepen trust, to improve access, and to increase meaningful engagement across the district. Next slide. All these strategies within 4240 were implemented as planned this year with no material differences to the program budget. And you can see that we are doing an update to Strategy One for VAPA. We received some feedback and would love to include it, really focusing on expanding the promotion of our student performances, which are amazing across the board. So we want to really focus on boosting visibility and participation in family engagement of our VAPA programs as well as adding a more aligned metrics to increasing student participation of these extracurricular programs by 10% of June 2026. And we do want to note that this strategy is really grounded in research showing that strong arts programs are linked to better attendance, to lower suspension rates, and to stronger academic outcomes. And this is why VAPA is nested within Goal One. Next slide. So you can see that we are expecting to fully expend the funds planned for each action within Goal One. And next slide. Here are the 25-26 planned expenditures for each action supporting authentic engagement. Next slide. Okay, so under Goal Two, we aim to ensure that every student has access to a high-quality educator, an inclusive, anti-racist, and accessible learning environment. And we're excited that we've surpassed some of our three-year goals for reducing chronic absenteeism, doubling the target just in one year. And these numbers will be updated once we conclude the year. For teacher retention, we increased from 66 to 68, marking 25% progress towards our goal of 80. And while that's encouraging, more work is needed to sustain and build on this momentum. However, we did see a 2% decline in the percentage of teachers with three or more years of experience. And now that number is at 82. So this signals a need to create stronger strategies to retain our more experienced educators and support that workforce stability that we know is so important for our student success. Next slide. So for Goal Two, our educational partners emphasized the need to strengthen recruitment pipelines for our Black educators and to expand our in-house credentialing through university partnerships. There were calls for improved operational systems, like access to supplies and time cards, and to increase transparency around who were the LCAP-funded staffing. Partners really also stressed aligning professional development with impact to better support under-prepared staff and create stronger mentoring for our new teachers. And some concerns were raised about that gap of reduction of vice principals because that pipeline was really important. And finally, they highlighted the need for a stronger site-climate support, including more culture-building resources. Next slide. So for our Program 1760, additional staff for high percentage of UPP schools and duplicated propucal. There were no material changes to the program budget, and both strategies are on track to meet the goal. However, we did update the language for the strategies to be more specific about what support is being added. So for Strategy One, this invests additional certificated staff for our high concentration on duplicated pupil schools. The roles that are included in this are vice principals, instructional specialists, prep teachers, counselors, CTE leads. And these really support targeted academic and social-emotional support at our schools with high percentage of UPP. We also added another strategy for staffing stability of rural enrollment schools. And so to make sure that we're protecting the instructional quality of schools that have low enrollment, we provide targeted funding to stabilize staffing and ensure that students have consistent access to high-quality instruction. Next slide. For Program 2315, Employee Recruitment and Retention, we've implemented strategies as planned with no material differences to the program budget. However, we do see that we've got three strategies that are on track. One that's not yet on track. Strategy Four, in particular, recruitment and retention for our diverse educators. We did partner with Asset to be able to gather strategies. We want to plan to collaborate with local churches and civic groups to be able to expand our outreach to recruit Black educators. And we also really want to strengthen that retention through mentorship, through community building, and through targeted supports to create an inclusive, supportive environment for these staff members. And then this is a new strategy, Strategy Six, as a result of feedback we received from the DLI PAC around dual-language teacher recruitment and retention. We know that we want to sustain and grow our dual-language programs, and that's possible through our DLI teachers. And so we want to launch a targeted strategy to recruit and retain high-quality bilingual teachers and efforts to support continuity, reduce vacancies, and advance achievement for our multilingual learners. Next slide. So here you can see that we are expecting to fully expend the funds planned for each action of Goal Two. And on the next slide, you can see the 25-26 planned expenditures for each action. Next slide. Okay, so Goal Three is our focus on really preparing our students to graduate college and career-ready in a multilingual technological world. This year, we've really expanded our paid internship placements from 20 to 65 across our six high schools, which really broadens that real-world learning opportunity that we want to create for our students. Our I-ready results show strong early gains. And while the data on this slide reflects our mid-year update, because right now, we're only at 80% through our administration of I-ready. Our current data that I just looked up a few minutes before presenting do present that we're well on track to meet our goal with right now, 14% of our students having grown in reading for being meeting and exceeding, and 19% in math by year's end. And so we expect that those numbers are going to continue to increase as we finalize those assessments. And we look forward to presenting those numbers, but I couldn't resist not sharing that data already. We were initially, at the mid-year point, also concerned about our reclassification data. You can see on the slide that we saw a decline in our reclassification numbers. But I met with Director Orozco today, and he shared that currently, as of today, we are at 11.4 reclassification rate, which is already .4 increase. we are at eleven-point-four reclassification rate, which is already point-four increase for this reclassification rate from last year. And we do anticipate that as LCAP scores continue to come in, that we're going to see an increase to rise to about another percent. And so, once those results are final, we will present them to the board. But this really, for us, marks a clear momentum in the progress that we're making towards achievement and Goal Three. Next slide. So the feedback we received for Goal Three really shared some concerns and elevated concerns about the lack of a common ELA curriculum, about limited use of the current Tier Two SIPs program and a misalignment of assessment, particularly of I-Ready in our early grades, which, as you know, we've addressed now with the implementation of M-Class. We also saw that our educational partners wanted to see strategies to improve outcomes for our African-American students, as well as wanted to see a better connection for professional learning. They want to see us bring back those underused buyback days, and they want to see us bring back more structured support around the ILT, the Instructional Leadership Team at school sites. Sites also support or reported limited central support at the school site. They're hoping to see an increase of vice principals to support achievement at school sites. And they want clearer roles for prep teachers and more paraeducators to support at elementary school sites. And then finally, staffing really remains unstable, and we know that staffing really impacts student achievement. And so site leaders and our PACs really want to see new teachers, limited. They want more experienced teachers, and they want stronger pipeline and competitive pay as needed to retain talent. Next slide. So for program twelve fifty, Elementary School Support, all strategies were implemented as planned with no material differences to the program. And we are on track of the strategies for the three listed here. We did add some strategies, class size reduction. So again, aligned to Goal One and coming from the same funding source that smaller class sizes really allow for a more inclusive and engagement learning environment, as well as an additional strategy, Strategy Five, for Combo Class Compensation Initiative. We know that it is difficult when we have combo classes, and when elementary teachers are assigned to these combination classes, they receive an annual stipend. And this targeted professional development that is needed to be able to teach a class that is combined needs to be in place to help our teachers to effectively differentiate instruction and manage a multi-grade planning. And so, we've added that strategy to make sure that those teachers get those supports. Next slide. For program twelve fifty-one, our Secondary Schools Program, our strategies were implemented as planned with no material changes to the program budget. And you can see that three strategies are not yet effective and need revision, and two are on track to meet our goal. And we've updated our strategies to really strengthen our secondary academic supports as well as our college and career readiness. For Strategy Two, we're relabeling that strategy to really focus on what we're doing and focusing on, which is secondary counseling. And so we want to make sure that we're aligning expectation across sites so that every student is receiving consistent academic career planning and that we're really building on that strategy of four-year plans for students. For CTE Academy-aligned staffing, we know that academies are really important, and academy purity allows allocations, allows the ability to be able to promote interdisciplinary planning to create stronger relationships within academies and to have that instructional coherence at our secondary school sites. And we think that this is a really important strategy to ride into the LCAP. For Strategy Seven, this is a new strategy around adding intervention and class size reduction to our secondary schools, and it aims to support smaller class sizes and expand access to A to G courses to CTE, to dual enrollment and enrichment in secondary schools. And it also builds time for secondary schools to be able to have targeted intervention in areas like the arts, STEM, and leadership. And then finally, for Strategy Eight, this is also a new strategy that we felt is really important that we documented as part of our LCAP, college and career readiness culture. So we're going to continue to build a strong culture and career-going culture in our campuses by supporting the PSAT access, by encouraging college and career site visits to all of our students, and then providing targeted professional development for our staff. Next slide. So for program twelve ninety, supplemental instructional program, again, all of our actions were implemented as planned with no material changes, and all of our strategies are on track to meet the goal. We've updated one strategy, Strategy Two, Equitable Data and Assessment Review, to strengthen how we use data to support student success. And really, the strategy focuses on improving MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Support Implementation, by enhancing Tier One instruction, identifying student needs, and evaluating intervention impact. And as a result of the feedback we received from our plans or our PACs, we want to make sure that we shift our lens and celebrate the whole child by really focusing on first highlighting student strengths and then growths and creating plans, not just areas of need. Next slide. So for program eleven oh-two, Multilingual Support Program, we've implemented it as planned with no material changes, and we've updated two strategies. The first, Educational Technology and Supplementary Curriculum. We're going to leverage M-class lectora and amplify caminos to address those gaps that we've had in telling us the story of biliteracy at our DLI schools. And so we're excited to finally have data that aligns and provides us access to how our students are doing in Spanish and in English. And then for Strategy Four, Dual Language Immersion, DLI Program, we are really proud of our DLI programs in the district and felt that it was really important that a strategy was written in our LCAP about strengthening our DLI programs to make sure that our students are not only taught by highly skilled bilingual educators, but that our district is also supporting targeted PD, curricular resources, and collaboration time, which is what we heard from our principals as needed to make sure that our DLI programs are delivering rigorous, standards-aligned instruction in both English and the target language. Next slide. So all strategies under sixty-one-ten, Professional Development, were implemented as planned with no material changes to the budget. And we are on track to meet the goal with all strategies. We're most excited to share that the number of our CSI schools, Comprehensive Support and Improvement Schools, dropped from nine to just one this past year, which reflects a really, yeah, we can clap for that, reflecting a strong progress around the strategies that we're using. Thank you. We are continuing to act on these strategies, but also want to refine Strategy Three to include instructional learning walks, which we've been using and want to continue to expand on. And so our curriculum and instruction staff partners with site leaders at the K through or the elementary and secondary level. And we use the Instructional Practice Guide, the IPG, to observe classrooms and provide standards-aligned feedback. And this data really informs our site-level and district-level professional development and strengthens our instructional quality across the system. Next slide. So for program fifty-two sixty, Evaluation and Program Monitoring, all strategies were implemented as planned, and there were no material differences. We are on track to meeting our goals. We did, however, update one strategy, Specialized Training and System Support. We will continue to provide that specialized training through our staff funded by this program, mostly that comes out of state and federal. But we also want to make sure that we're working with that team, and this is as a result of feedback from both our principals and our PACs, that there's a space to be able to improve our internal systems for ordering supplies, for processing contracts, and for time card reporting and processing system requests. And streamlining these processes is going to reduce that administrative workload and allow our school staff to focus more directly on supporting students. So we'll be working closely with that staff to focus on how we can streamline that. Next slide. So you can see here for Goal Three that we are planning to fully expend the funds planned for each action of Goal Three. And on the next slide, you can see the twenty-five, twenty-six planned expenditures for each action. Goal Four focuses on accelerating academic growth for our students with disabilities by providing adaptive resources and providing targeted support. And we're proud to share that the district is now below that three-point-oh disproportionality index and has officially exited disproportionality status for our African-American students identified as emotionally disturbed and white students placed in separate settings. Academically, our students with disabilities are making steady progress, particularly with our local metrics of I-Ready. We saw an increase in K-eight of five-point-six in reading and six in math. And it shows that, you know, supports are moving us in the right direction. However, we do continue to see that disproportionality in disciplinary incidents, even though we are not disproportionate. And particularly under the category of other health impaired for African-American students, we continue to see that disproportionality. And so we will continue to remain focused on this as a key area moving forward. Next slide. So our educational partners voiced strong concerns about staffing and wanting to make sure that we were focusing on the effectiveness of special education services. Sites said that they want more full-time psychologists at elementary schools. They want more RSP teachers, more speech-language pathologists. They want more support and intervention onsite. They did note high caseloads, especially for speech therapists. And there was some concern about retention of being able to keep our people on the ground. They wanted more behavioral and early intervention support, and they wanted clear RTI frameworks or MTSS frameworks. They wanted to make sure that we were focusing less on compliance and focusing more on ensuring student success. Next slide. And so for program forty-two sixty, Multi-Tierred System of Supports, we did implement as planned with no changes to the budget. And our one, two strategies are on track and one is not yet. We wanted to make some edits to Strategy Three to really focus on ensuring that we're focusing on the graduation rates of our students with disabilities and making sure that we're leveraging adaptive online instructional tools to launch credit recovery for these students. We also wanted to make sure that we were responsive to feedback and really focused on that inclusive instructional support that our educators are asking for. So we want to make sure that we're strengthening that early inclusion and that the special education team provides more coaching and resources to help educators to be able to deliver high-quality instruction and inclusive classrooms, particularly in our early grades. We got a lot of feedback about TK, and so we're going to make sure to provide targeted support there. Next slide. And you can see here, we are planning on fully expending the funds in each action of this goal or of Goal Four. And here are the planned expenditures. For Goal Five, we want to accelerate academic growth, and we want to reduce disparities for our focal student groups. And we are seeing some positive trends. Again, African-American students in K-eight have made meaningful gains on I-Ready. I have the latest numbers. The numbers on the slide are the mid-year update, but this early data of eighty percent completion indicates that we are on track to increase achievement for K to twelve for African-American students by fourteen percent in reading and fifteen percent in math. And for English learners, showing that we're projected to be at sixteen percent for reading and twenty percent for math. So again, some early reflection of stronger academic growth for our students in Goal Five. Next slide. So for the feedback that was emphasized for Goal Five was mostly around curriculum and wanting to make sure that we had curriculum and professional development that was targeted for newcomers, for long-term English learners, to be able to support our DLI sites, and particularly a call for a comprehensive ELA curriculum, to be able to provide support for African-American students. We're wanting to see more mentoring, more behavioral supports, more counseling support at school sites, and really expanding our BSUs and career pathways access. We also got some feedback that there's a need to improve communication between central office and our sites. Next slide. Okay, so all strategies under program forty-one seventy, which is our English language learner support, were implemented as planned with no material differences. And we are on track to meet our goals. We're making some edits to Strategy Two to really address that professional development need that was identified in the feedback. So the Alma Department is going to be very intentional about providing targeted PD to strengthen strategies both for our designated ELD and our integrated ELD to make sure that our English learners are able to access content in both of those spaces. We want to build on the internationals and newcomer program that we're very proud of. And based on feedback that we got from our MDAC, we want to launch a buddy and mentor system for our newcomer students to be able to help them build that peer connection that is so needed when students arrive into a new country. And we want to do so to ease their transition into our school communities. For Strategy Seven, this is a new strategy into this program. This one used to stand alone, and we feel like it's important that it's incorporated into this single program. And it's around making sure that we're providing long-term English learner professional development for our sites, really focus on analyzing data to improve instruction. For program eleven eighty, we did implement as planned with no material changes. We are on track, and we are, for Strategy Three, Literacy Achievement, we are currently operating in seven schools and are looking to expand to ten next year and really focusing on those additional three based on site needs and on data. And so we want to use the data from reading at the beginning of the year to identify where there are additional needs and then provide support based on that. And this recommendation was as a result of our Asset team. In terms of Strategy Four, we incorporated great feedback we got from our PAC around the need to create a long-term engagement plan to support our families and to develop this from input from our families as well as from our students. So really leveraging our leaders in the secondary schools, our student leaders. And we also want to make sure that we roll out a toolkit at every single secondary school to make sure that we have a consistent and successful launch of Black Student Unions at every one of our secondary schools. For Strategy Five, College and Career Readiness will enhance support through drop-in tutoring. We want to create transportation for college tours, and we want to partner with Contra Costa College to host an African-American Leadership Summit. For Strategy Six, this was as a result of great feedback we got. We want to make sure that we have a multimedia campaign to make sure that our African-American students and families are very clear, and all of our families, about what the A to G requirements are and what college pathways students have access to. And then last but not least, we've incorporated a strategy around anti-racism and culturally responsive practice. We want to make sure that we are providing intentional professional learning for our educators to focus on anti-racism and bias awareness to support our staff to build a more inclusive and supportive school environment for our students. to support our staff to build a more inclusive and supportive school environment for our students. And we feel like this is going to directly support the strategies of goal three and goal five. And next slide. You can see that we are expecting to fully expend the funds planned for each one of these actions. And you can see the planned expenditures for next year. So we do present as part of our hearing, our Equity Multiplier School. So Lincoln Elementary School has a goal to increase on the aspect. And as you know, we don't have those results yet, but we have seen some early signs of progress. Where we've seen Lincoln, they had a hundred and sixty-six behavioral incidents and eighty-three percent were addressed through other means of correction, like the restorative conversations and support interventions, which is really, really positive among English learners. The percent of students who were performing three or more grades below in I Ready have dropped from twenty-five to fourteen percent. And those with two levels below dropped from forty-eight to thirty, which signals really great progress. In math, we saw students that were three or more grades below fall from forty-three to twenty-three, which is a forty-seven percent reduction, again signaling major gains for students that need the most support, which was their focus. And so these outcomes really highlight the positive impact that targeted academic and behavioral strategies have been implemented in Lincoln. Next slide. So you can see here that their strategies were implemented as planned. And there was one strategy, six point five, that was not able to be implemented as a result of staffing vacancy, and that's why that is marked as not effective. And so for the upcoming school year, they're hoping to invest in a leadership role through elementary vice principal to help strengthen that instructional coaching and professional development and family engagement that we know is so important and to be able to lead school-wide systems and support academic progress. They also want to incorporate action six point two, Instructional Specialists of Culture and Climate. This role is meant to really foster that safe, inclusive environment that we're seeing good momentum. They want to make sure that recess and the classroom is really reinforcing that school climate practice of PBIS and that it's tied to their multi-tiered system of support. Next slide. So you can see here the estimated actuals for Equity Multiplier for Lincoln. And you can also in the next slide, see the planned expenditures for each action for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, as well as the total allocation for the school. Next slide. So for Greenwood Academy, our second Equity Multiplier School from this academic year, they're seeing great indicators of progress as well. Their overall graduation rate rose from seventy-six point seven to eighty-one point six, which is huge. We saw that African-American students made especially notable gains with graduation rates increasing from seventy-six point one to ninety-two point six, which is a really powerful step towards equity. We saw suspension among homeless students decline by point five percent, which is a sign that their targeted supports are working. And however, overall suspension rates did rise by two point nine percent, highlighting the need to strengthen those behavior systems and early interventions as part of the strategy. Next slide. So you can see here that the effectiveness shows that two strategies are not yet effective, but three are on track. And as a result, Sylvester Greenwood is proposing some changes. They also align to Lincoln and would like to provide an assistant principal that's really focused on teaching and learning to support improving academic outcomes. They want to add some classified hours to be able to continue to track attendance and identify trends and do that communication that's very needed for families. They want to add an assistant principal really focused on culture and climate to urgently address that increase of suspensions. They want to also provide support through professional conferences to continue to build support of inclusive proxies for their educators. And on the next slide, you can see the estimated actuals as well as the twenty-five, twenty-six planned expenditures by action and the total allocation funds for Sylvester Greenwood Academy. And then finally, our last goal, our new added goal to the LCAP is Stige Elementary School, our newest Equity Multiplier site for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Their goal is also to improve the average distance from standard for ELA by five points. They're hoping to do so by investing in a dropout prevention and chronic absenteeism intervention. They want to focus on English language development support to accelerate language acquisition for our students through content. They want to create class size reduction and early learning personalization to increase instructional quality and student engagement, particularly in kindergarten. And they want to build an aerobic sub to make sure that there's instructional continuity and flexibility across classrooms to be able to observe each other and get coaching from their peers. And so these efforts really are designed to create the conditions for sustained academic growth at Stige. Next slide. And so here you can see their planned expenditures by action and the total allotment. So in conclusion, this year's LCAP process really reflects our commitment to listening and responding. We've strengthened engagement, expanded opportunities for input, and made real changes based on what we heard. This work is ongoing, it's not done, and we do continue to invite the public to give us feedback. Our educational partners can share additional input by emailing, and this is anytime, lcap@wccusd.net. This is also available through our website, our LCAP page, because together we really are shaping a plan that reflects our shared priorities and keeps students at the center. So thank you so much. I know that was a long presentation.
Thank you so much. Yeah, you can clap for that. I heard clapping out there. Okay, we're going to go to board comments and then public comment. Are there any, I mean, board questions and then public comment? Are there any questions from the board? Okay, I have a couple. So, oh, you do too. Oh, go, go ahead. Oh, Demetrius? Oh, up there. Okay, go, go ahead, trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Rickler. I love how you point up. I appreciate it. So my first question is Gussa Verpreskis. First of all, thank you for a wonderful presentation. It's one of the best I've seen since I got on the board around the LCAP. I wanted to point at page thirty-seven for goal five. You talked about strategy four for internationals and newcomers programs. One of the new strategies is incorporating this buddy system. I was wondering if you could talk about how sites are going to do that and what the process is going to be at the school side since we have newcomers in so many of our schools.
Thank you for elevating that. And while we will encourage every single school site to do this as a best practice, we know that sometimes you want to think big but start small. And so we want to begin to pilot a process through our newcomers academy in particular, where we know we have support and guidance from our central staff. And so I've been in collaboration with Director Ordozco, and we want to learn from the practices of our Grant Elementary School newcomer program that actually has very targeted SCL strategies and also from our internationals program, both at Helms, Richmond High, and Kennedy, to first try out some things at those school sites to be very intentional and then to create a toolkit based on what we learned from those sites to then share out with the rest of our sites.
Thank you. You head straight into my second question, which is about the newcomers academy. So as you know, I've been pushing many of the boards to expand the newcomers academy at Grant. So could you talk about how we're expanding the current program next year and how we're leveraging LCAP funds to hopefully do that?
Yeah, thank you for highlighting that. We definitely know that the data is suggesting that that program is really effective. And so we're really continuing our commitment to providing that resource for our newcomer students at Grant, which has the highest number of students who are newcomer in the district. We also know that there are more needs out there. And at this time, unfortunately, because of our budget constraints, we're not planning on expanding on that. But we are learning great strategies that the sites are, that that site in particular is using. And we've noticed that many of our school sites are collaborating and learning from that model and currently are using their own site funds to be able to create versions of that model. So for example, we have Lincoln Elementary School and we have King Elementary School, both that have staff that are targeted to be able to support newcomer students. And so what we want to create right now, while we have some fiscal constraints, is to create that collaboration space so that we're learning from the investments we're making at Grant at other school sites. And hopefully we'll be able to at some point expand that same program to other school sites.
Thank you. And my last question for strategy seven. How will we provide that professional development around anti-racism for our staff?
Thank you for that. We've got several ideas, and we haven't yet identified exactly how we're going to do it. But we're in early conversations about making sure that we are providing intentional space for our new hires. And so we have a collaboration that we engage with, with human resources, where we train all of our new teachers coming in and teach them things about how to log in absences and how to meet their union leadership. And so in those spaces, we plan to create workshops to make sure that every single new hire is also trained, both by adding culturally responsive strategies to their toolkit as well as really leveraging that partnership and work that we have started with Dr. Rogersard. We also want to make sure that we are providing opportunities, both in person to continue the work that immersive schools has started, as well as virtual, so that our educators have opportunities to be able to receive their twelve hours of self-directed PD through both, again, reflection of unconscious bias that we know exists and really providing the space for safe conversation for educators to talk about that, but as well as really recognizing the strategies that are most effective for students in our district.
Thank you so much, President. That was my last question. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Clerk Nellin, did you have questions? No? Okay.
No questions, just comments.
Okay, thank you. So I've got a couple of questions. The first one is to follow up on newcomers and students that do not speak English. I learned this week that Elstridio High School has zero support for students that are newcomers or don't speak English. Is that accurate?
We do concentrate our support at schools that have the most number of English learners and newcomers. So that is correct. However, we have a toolkit that is available that we share with all of our educators. And so it's making me think that we need to, you know, better socialize those resources available. And so in terms of additional staffing, like we do at Kennedy and Richmond and Helms and Grant, we don't have additional staffing allocated, but we do have resources.
Okay, I'll make some comments about that. IB at the secondary level, that was cut. So I read this document and I still seem to see secondary level IB international backlorian in here. How is that program being supported?
Thank you for asking that question. And so as the public knows, we are phasing out of the support for IB. However, we have made a commitment still to students. And so it remains in the LCAP to be able to meet that commitment to our current eleventh graders for the upcoming school year. But we have made some reductions to that program to reflect that phase out at Penno Valley High School.
Okay, and next is about money. So if I'm reading this correctly, you've spent every single dollar or you're projected to spend every single LCAP dollar twenty-four to twenty-five. Is that accurate? There's no carryover?
That is a money question, which is outside of my wheelhouse. So I look to David or Jeff to be able to support that. But that is the, we plan on spending all our money, most certainly. I don't know if you want to add to that?
That's correct. We plan on spending every dollar of LCAP in twenty-four, twenty-five and having no carryover for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay. Okay, that is all I have. We'll go to public comment. Is there any public comment on the item?
Yes, our first public comment is Mark Mitchell.
So thank you, Mr. Costa. I appreciate that. Robust and aspirational vision for our district. Unfortunately, United Teachers of Richmond wants to, wants to point out that what's actually facing our students and educators is different. As far as social and emotional support, added counseling services for our most vulnerable students, a grant for millions of dollars was canceled by the district this year. Those services will not be coming. Counseling ranks are reduced. Some schools only have a counselor one or two days per week. Those students will never be able to form relationships with those counselors that are more meaningful. The interventions for reading and other academic purposes have been slashed or eliminated at many sites. The few people who come back to do those work, those jobs will be involuntarily transferred or reassigned when they arrive because we're going to start the year with over a hundred certified vacancies as no one's coming to work here for twenty-twenty-three wages.
Our next public comment is Jean Kinster. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm really confused at listening to this presentation. Our union just told us that you're raising class sizes, but you repeatedly in this document said how there's research to say that smaller class sizes is what we need. Which is it? We can't say that we're going to have smaller class sizes or Lord forbid, maintain the ones we have, but then be told, no, we're raising your class sizes. That just doesn't make sense. Is there any way maybe in the future you can clarify that or make it make sense for us? Thank you.
Our next public comment is Gabrielle Michiellotti.
I found some really interesting things in the LCAP report. For example, support goal three by decreasing class sizes in elementary. I'm sure you understand my shock in seeing this after our bargaining team was given a proposal this Monday from the district to raise elementary class size in grades four through six. The LCAP continues. Studies have shown that smaller class sizes facilitate better student-teacher interactions, leading to increased student engagement and attendance. I remember one of the district's responses when we proposed lower class sizes to be, if you have empirical research that smaller class size supports student achievement, I want to see it. I'm so glad we brought that research back, and it clearly influenced the LCAP goals to support students. On page thirty-eight, you mentioned that to ensure students receive appropriate services and support, the district added six caditions to four existing social workers. That sounds excellent. I'm hoping that these four existing social workers are not the same force set to be cut as part of the district's twenty-five, twenty-six solvency plan. I suppose what my question is, when are you going to align all these things that sound so great in the LCAP to your actual behavior, decision-making, and proposals at the bargaining table?
Our next public comment is Alon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just want to know, if you guys are planning to spend all the budget, I would like the board to request, where is those expenditures? Because it was a lot of programs not done, I know, for African-American and black children and parents. So if that money is sitting there and you guys plan to spend it, on what? Where is it going to our debt? Is it going to some other thing? Where is that money going to be spent? And I think the board should ask for accountability on where is that money going to be spent? And I think the board should ask for accountability on where is that money going to be spent. I'm complete.
Next public comment is Sky Nelson.
I was grateful to be part of the LCAP meeting a few times. Thank you for that update. And thank you, President Reckler and Board Member Smith Folds for coming to Elstridio High School for our meeting yesterday. In response to Gonzalez's Hoi comment about anti-racism for staff, I was really encouraged by the student turnout yesterday at our normalizing behaviors meeting and would like to expand that community building process next year if we can. It's just about talking together at our sites about what's important to us and the students. I want to point out the competitive salary comment. I'm confused by the competitive salary comment when there's no cost of living increase or any kind of raise in the bargaining table this year. So I'm looking at the the optics for what what's being said and what's being felt by the community. And as a teacher and parent and community member, I'm confused by that disconnect. Also, the lower class sizes seems disconnected. So thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Francis Gortiz. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening again, Board. Tonight I want to uplift the LCAP plan that was presented today by Associate Superintendent Acosta Represcus. It reflects a shared vision for, you know, what students in our district deserve, schools that are inclusive, relationships that are healing. Oh, shit. And classrooms where every child is seen. But this vision cannot live in a silo. When we examine the proposed budget alongside this plan, the disconnect becomes clear. The LCAP speaks to transformation while the budget speaks to status quo. The LCAP prioritizes student belonging, engagement and academic growth, yet the bulk of our spending is locked away in areas that don't directly serve those goals. We cannot claim to be equity-driven and then pass a budget that fails to fund the plan designed to deliver that equity. If we truly believe in the commitments made in the LCAP, then our budget must reflect these values. Our students deserve more than just a plan. They deserve action.
Our next public comment is Public Advocates. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Chris Provenza. I'm an attorney with Public Advocates. Last year, the district first submitted an incomplete and inaccurate LCAP showing over $60 million in unspent carryover funds because the annual update table wasn't properly filled out. This year, I'm seeing a similar issue, except instead of being empty, the table shows last year's planned and estimated actual expenditures as exactly the same, down to the cent for all 28 actions. I'm concerned that these identical figures suggest that the district is once again failing to accurately report spending. Families are entitled to transparency. If the numbers are wrong, they must be corrected before adopting the LCAP. If they're accurate, the district should explain more clearly how the funds were spent, including last year's $1.5 million in carryover. I'll close by noting that it's 9:46, over three hours into your meeting. Holding this hearing so late does not reflect authentic engagement. Thank you.
Next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. So PBIS, I'm not going to say who the person I sent an email to at least twice asking for resources, because my principal told me that we had funds that had to be used by the end of the summer, because PBIS goes to our school culture and climate, but yet I have not heard of any type of trains or any things that I can go to. So y'all probably know who that person is. Anti-racism, my thing is this, are we pacifying adults versus empowering students? Adults need to get out their feelings, because there are work that we need to do as educators before our students to make them feel whole. Also, black student achievement. I always have this question about where is the affirming academic literature? Why are we not, be it black, Asian, Latino, Latina? We have a growing Muslim-Arabic population at our school in particular. Where is the literature that affirms them? Maybe if they feel more affirmed than what they see and hear in their classroom on a daily basis, they will be more engaged in their academics. Thank you.
Last public comment is Marie. Please unmute yourself.
Oh, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I just had a question. Where can I find last year's report to show exactly how much, to show how the money in the budget was spent? I'm looking for a report that shows it line by line. I know there's a lot of good programs that are being implemented, but I'm wondering how much money is going into each site with with each program. Thank you.
Okay, thank you to everyone who gave public comment. We'll go to comments from the board. Anybody have comments? Trustee Smith Folds, do you have comments?
I'll go after Demetrio. His hand was up first.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Gonzalez Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you both. Ms. Acosta Represcus, again, I wanted to thank you and your team for working on this so hard. I know that you have been working incredibly hard to engage with all of our groups and parents and staff. I want to thank them also for being involved. And I also see a lot of progress in a lot of areas. I appreciate all the data and the transparency around progress. And then this is more of a comment just in general. I I want to ensure that, you know, some of us on the board have been talking about expanding the newcomer schools for elementary for a long time. And I want to make sure that in the next couple of years, we actually see expansion happen. I know that we're not in a good place financially. I mean, we all know this very much. We're about to go into the budget conversation after this. But knowing that, I really think that our English language learners are falling through the cracks. And even though we're seeing growth in our classification and growth and progress through our district, we all know that English language learners are still not being served in a lot of our schools, where they might not have a teacher or they have someone who doesn't know how to support them, who doesn't speak their language. That's why I've been advocating for the expansion of a newcomer program. And I want to make sure that we actually do it. So I don't care what we got to do next year, but I want to make sure that we do it. Because to be honest, I'm tired of talking about it for the last five years. And this is not towards you, Ms. Acosta Represcus. I just want you to know that. But just us in general, that I'm starting to like lose faith that we're going to do it, because I've been talking about it for so long. But we have to do it, just because we have hundreds of newcomers throughout this district and teachers don't know how to support them. And many of us, I think, including you, Ms. Acosta Represcus, myself, have felt what it is to be unsupported as an immigrant to this country. And I just don't want that to continue to happen. So I want to make sure that you know this, Dr. Moses. I know you're going back to your position thankfully as CBO, and we have our incoming superintendent. I want you to know this is one of my top priorities for next year and hopefully some others on the board, apart from other things, but this one specifically. I think we have to make happen. So that's it, President. Thank you.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I think one of the things that we could think about as a district when we're talking about parent engagement is we have, we have prime opportunities every year to catch parents when they are at the beginning. So at our back-to-school night, when we send the brown envelopes home for students to fill out their emergency cards, these are prime opportunities that parents take the time to read the materials that they're given. So if we had a one-pager in there when our PACs meet, because they're all standardized dates, right? Third Monday, first Tuesday, the Zoom links usually don't change. So I think that, and then telling them exactly like, what does APAC stand for? What does E-LIKE stand for? What does it do at your school? What does an SSE stand for? And you don't have to be a member to show up, right? So I think that that's one of the first steps in engagement. Some type of saturating parents with information at the very beginning and then continuing to do that. But when we have parents or we have schools that do wonderful with Parent Square, we have schools that do wonderful with their newsletters, either monthly or weekly newsletters. These are all opportunities to put in information about when the next PAC meets, right? So I think for me, that's one of the the parts of the LCAP I really want to drill down, because I want us to have as many voices in the room as possible so we can get the greatest amount of information, how to make the greatest impact in our district. So that's one thing that I've been thinking about. I want to speak to supporting our most marginalized students. I think that we have to drill down on how we support our most marginalized students more and more and take more and more deep dives into that, because the data does show if we can get that part right, then everybody comes up. And I think that comes a lot with our training, with our teachers, professional development with our teachers and giving them time to talk to each other about best strategies, I think will also also work. To that point, we've heard from a lot of teachers that doing the anti-racism work requires training. It requires communication. It requires understanding. So again, saturating all of our, not only our teachers, our administrators, our parents and our students. Our students are some of the greatest drivers in what we need in the district. So having more conversations with our students, when we're talking about student summits, when we're talking about town halls at school sites, having our student voice really be at the table with our All Student Congress, with our presentation from our student trustees, all of this helps us really know what's needed. I think a lot of times adults assume what students need, but if we heard from a newcomer student, listen, I'm sitting in a classroom and I don't know anything that's happening because I'm not able to communicate with my teacher or I have to wait for a student, my fellow friend, to help me interpret. If we hear from a black student, you know, I can't walk up and down the hallway without hearing a slur. If we hear from one of our LTP, LGBTQIA students that, listen, it's not okay that I feel that I'm not seen or heard. Listening to our students helps drive what we need to do in the district to make better experiences. So that's all. Thank you so much for the work that you did. This is not an easy ball to roll up the hill, but I appreciate you doing it. I'm complete.
Go ahead. I just had to remind you, we're at 9:54. We're going to have to do a motion to extend. So do something brief.
Okay, my comment will be really quick. I just want to thank you for the presentation. I think this LCAP gives us a gleam of hope, I think, as parents. It really gives us an opportunity to say this is what we can expect for our students. And I would like to see more of the alignment within our budget, because I think it has to align, because we don't want to make that confusion. We don't want to, our community to think that we are talking to different languages. So to me, it's really important that, you know, just as we have hope as parents here on the dais with, you know, everything that the LCAP can bring to our students, that we are committed to ensuring that we follow through with these things. But I really do appreciate the presentation. I know the hard work that has gone out, so thank you. And that's my comment.
Thank you very much. Okay, so from my comments, thank you very much. This is markedly, markedly, markedly improved. I really deeply appreciate it. I see how much work went into it. I really, thank you. I would like you please to check the numbers that Public Advocates called in again. If the budget for 2526 is an absolute duplicate of 2425 or from 23 to 24, so I just want to make sure that there, that you are critically looking and not just copying over. I also, I want to share the newcomer comment and the comment about schools that don't have English learner support. I mean, that is like, kind of stunning. It's like back in the olden days when I went to school. So we need to figure out what, how to support those students, whether they're moving to a different school, maybe they transferred to Richmond, how they're identified, how they're supported. I'd like to see the toolkit. I think teachers need to see it, because I'm, I just had a recent conversation, not in awareness that anything was even present for students. And that is all I have. And seeing nothing else, I'm going to close the public hearing at 9:57 PM. Okay, so now to the board. We're at 9:57. We have two additional items. We have the budget public hearing, which must go tonight, and we have the quarterly update on Kennedy High School. And we have a small consent item that I pulled. What would the board like to do? We have to hear the hearing tonight. Do we want to table the Kennedy-Richmond-Stige update to next week and let people go home? Does someone want to make a motion with an idea?
I can't extend past the 10:30 timeline. So whatever we need to move and adjust the agenda to fit in, I'm not able to stay past 10:30 tonight.
So is there a motion to extend to 10:30? And do you want to table the Kennedy-Richmond-Stige update? We do have three. You could leave early if you wanted to, if Trustee Gonzalez Hoi is going to stay on.
I'll make a motion that we extend until 10:30 so that we can hear F2 and the pulled item from consent, and then we close the meeting after that.
I'm I'm sorry. Okay, just to clarify, I heard your motion. We have to have a quorum in person. So Trustee Smith Folds can't leave. So I think we're going to be done at 10:30, as you said. Okay, so you want to hear budget and you want to table Kennedy-Richmond-Stige?
Yes, and and so we can hear also the pulled consent item.
Okay, great. Okay, is there a second on that? I'll second it. I'll go to the vote. Student trustee Espinoza Jr.
Yes.
Trustee Barone.
Yes.
Clerk Nunez.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
I'm a yes, so it carries with Trustee Hernandez's absence. Okay, we're up to budget.
Good evening.
Okay, so I need to open the public hearing before we do that. So you guys are ready to go. And here, here we go. Opening, I'm opening public hearing for the 2526 annual budget of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. The order will go like this. I will make my opening comments, which I'm doing now. Staff will make their presentation. Board will ask questions. And then we'll take public comment, take additional comments from the board and then close the public hearing. So the public hearing is now opened at 10 o'clock.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 202526 proposed budget. And before commencing in earnest, I do want to recognize I'm joined by Jeff Carter, who is supported by a very hardworking and gifted staff. Also want to recognize Dr. Morris, excuse me, getting nervous, Dr. Moses. Do appreciate the guiding hand that she has given during her tenure as the interim superintendent. Her passion, her leadership is to be commended and recognized and personal thanks on that. Next slide, please. This is a presentation within the context of a larger budget cycle in the interest of time. And knowing that you've seen a version of this slide before, we'll skip to the third slide, please. As I think is understood by most in the audience, the school district's budget is predicated upon the funding that we receive from the state, as has been the case. January's budget proposal from the governor suggested that there would be a more robust economy to support the state's initiatives going into 2526. In the course of the spring, matters have turned. The revenue forecast for the state has become more murky. And as a result, our funding has been reduced from our funding has been reduced from what we had anticipated based on January to now where we stand, uh, based on the May revision, which we received on the fourteenth. We're, uh, very much, uh, waiting to see what comes through the legislative process. The June enacted budget is due to come out next week. Uh, the forecast of materials with regards to the June, uh, enacted budget are not included in the presentation tonight. Uh, we do not have factual information to be able to incorporate that. We remain optimistic and that is a, um, update we will plan on giving when we come back on June twenty-fifth, to the extent that detail is known to us at that time. I want to turn it over to Mr. Carter.
Next slide. Uh, so on this slide, Gavin Newsom, uh, addressed the uncertainty in the state budget at the May revision. Uh, as, as David spoke to, uh, we are expecting additional revenues in twenty-five, in twenty-four, twenty-five, but we cannot build those into our twenty-five, twenty-six budget until the June enacted takes place. The only thing we've built in from the May revision is the two point three percent COLA for twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, hopefully that means that our forecasted revenues are slightly understated, um, but we won't know the restrictions on those, those dollars or where they can be spent, uh, until the enacted budget. Next slide. Uh, so this slide is also provided by the, uh, School Services of California. Uh, here they're pointing out the risks to the state economy and the state budget. Uh, if any of these factors change, the state budget could be revised, which would mean that our district budget would also need to be revised. Uh, the big three revenues for the state are personal income tax, corporation tax, and sales tax, all three of which are expected or projected to be down, uh, going into twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, based on Gavin, Gavin Newsom's, um, May revision. Next slide.
In terms, let's actually go to the next slide still. So the determining factors for a school district with regards to the local control formula, uh, which by the way, now ten, over ten years old, are matters related to enrollment and ADA. Uh, as folks I think are very well aware, the LCFF replaced what used to be a very intensive categorical funding. Uh, at this moment in time, English language learners, uh, low income students, foster youth are thought to require additional, uh, resources. So as, uh, this formula works, we have, uh, projection factors, again, uh, being a little redundant here, but enrollment, ADA, and the unduplicated pupil count. Uh, those values are then, uh, if you will, multiplied against a, a, the base grant as well as the, uh, grade span adjustments and the supplemental concentration. Uh, those, um, values, if you will, those, those outcomes are then adjusted on a year-over-year basis based on the cost of living adjustment. Next slide. Uh, in the course of tonight's presentation, quick as it is, we will touch on, on executive summary and the materials that have been submitted, you will find not just the executive summary, excuse me, eh, not just the executive summary, but also a summary of all funds. We, uh, are in compliance with the state's requirement to use the Saks form, the standardized accounting, and there is included a multi-year projection. Next slide.
Uh, so these are factors that went into our budget development. Uh, as you can see, transitional kindergarten is slightly increasing due to our expansion in twenty-five, twenty-six to TK at every school, as well as, uh, an additional expansion at schools that have the demand to take the the attendance and enrollment. Uh, cost of living adjustments or COLA has decreased, as you saw on the previous slide. One-time funds will, uh, will be, that are used for ongoing costs or will be, uh, expiring or exhausting over this three-year budget period. There's been an increase to our utilities, our property and liability insurance and service contracts, uh, which is just, uh, the cost of business going up. And our indirect costs, which is in a way a revenue, as well as our funded ADA are both going down. So these are all factors that go into our three-year budget projections and estimates for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Next slide. Uh, yeah, so this is the effect of COLA. Here on the left, you'll see our revenues that are estimated for twenty-four, twenty-five and our revenues that are projected for twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, you'll see there's about a difference of one point two million dollars. That is included with the two point three percent COLA that we received. So even though we're getting two point three percent, our ADA is going down to the point where we're effectively only getting a point three seven percent increase in revenues. Uh, in this, in this box on the right, you'll see our ADA, funded ADA in twenty-four, twenty-five at twenty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-two. You multiply that by the average base grant and you get about two hundred and fifty-two point eight or two hundred and fifty-two point nine million dollars. You apply the two point three percent COLA to that two hundred and forty-six dollars. Uh, that gives us a new average base grant and you'll see our ADA in twenty-five, twenty-six is going down to twenty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-four based on our three-year average of funded ADA. Uh, you multiply that out and we'll get two hundred and fifty-three million point nine, uh, in revenue. So you'll see that's only an increase of one million dollars or effectively a point four percent increase in our revenues, even though there is a two point three percent COLA being applied to the average base grant because of our funded ADA going down on the three-year average. We are not receiving a full two point three percent COLA that you would expect to see. Had ADA stayed the same, we would have received about six million dollars more rather than one million dollars more. But with our ADA going down, uh, the COLA is not two point three percent more in revenue. It's multiplied by your ADA. Adjusted for TK. So TK is increasing. Uh, you'll see that twenty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-four, uh, funded ADA is including the TK expansion that I referenced earlier.
Next slide, please. So in terms of the structural deficit, I think this is, uh, one of the places to spend some time. Uh, to be clear, the district is, uh, has presented a twenty-five, twenty-six budget that is balanced. Uh, it is important to note, though, that that budget is not a structurally balanced budget. And the distinction to be drawn is that the, uh, available revenues are requiring the use of our fund balances in order to balance the budget, meaning in-year reoccurring revenues are less than the in-year reoccurring expenses and the in-year non-reoccurring revenues are less than the, uh, non, um, reoccurring expenses. In sum, what we are doing is using our savings to support the current operations. It is also the case that when you look at the multi-year forecast, the year twenty-six, twenty-seven shows a deficit that is not able to be solved by the reserves that we have in hand. And in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that deficit, uh, grows. Uh, the, eh, this is a matter of some importance. I know the district has been down this path. Uh, however, the reserves are a hedge against risk and I think it is fair to say that if we, uh, heed the uh, language that comes out of the Legislative Analyst Office or Governor Newsom's, uh, Budget Office, uh, there is some, uh, hesitancy about the forecast and, uh, it is something that we will want to pay attention to on a go-forward basis. That said, it is conceivable, uh, we as yet, as I said earlier, don't know the revenues that will come to us for twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, that may, uh, by way of the June enacted budget, uh, solve for the deficit that we have in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Fingers are crossed, uh, but we will, we will see what comes from that. Next slide, please. Uh, I want to be real clear, right? A, a structural deficit is not ideal, but it is and can be an expression of prudence. Uh, the use of fund balance in this instance for, for the district in its current, uh, state, uh, is warranted. Uh, I think the issue is over time, how is it that the district, uh, adjusts the expenditure profile against the forecast revenues to be able to restore, uh, replenish reserves and, uh, solve for the issues that are driving the, uh, deficit such as it is. Next slide, please.
Uh, so here, over the next two years, you'll see the current budget is slated to fully exhaust Fund seventeen with contributions to cover the ongoing structural deficit based on current projections. Uh, in twenty-five, twenty-six, the approved fiscal solvency plan contemplates the additional six point four million dollars in reductions uh, for twenty-six, twenty-seven and with the need to, for even further reductions to get to a balanced structural budget without relying on reserves for a structural deficit. Uh, next slide. On this slide, you'll see the beginning fund balances and contributions from Fund seventeen over the three-year period needed to keep the twenty-five, twenty-six balanced, uh, budget balanced. Uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven will fully exhaust Fund seventeen unless additional revenues, uh, help delay the use of Fund seventeen. Uh, but you'll see that we are ending balance of zero dollars in Fund seventeen as of twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is the current fiscal solvency plan that was approved in twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, you'll see the seven point three million in reductions that were made in twenty-four, twenty-five for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year built into this budget. And in the future, twenty-six, twenty-seven reductions that are built into the multi-year projection, uh, which you will see are not enough to balance future years on a future slide, on the next slide. So, next slide.
Uh, the factors impacting the structural deficit are articulated here. There are a couple other additional points. One is the increased contractual services. I would qualify that phrase to say potential for uh, the decrease in COLA funding. I, I would offer that there is, uh, reason to be skeptical about the state's ability to fund what they have forecast. Uh, in the same way, uh, there is a positive in the context of declining enrollment. If our enrollment does not decline in the manner in which we have forecast or and/or our attendance improves, that will buoy our finances. Uh, I think, do think there are a couple, uh, other matters to be, uh, noted. One is that the multi-year projections do not take into account the sunsetting of the parcel tax, nor are any of the, uh, currently negotiated agreements, um, uh, is there a set aside for that purpose? And I, as we go to the next slide, please, uh, one of the things that I think, uh, has been addressed uh, before this slide is worth repeating, uh, the escalating costs related to the general fund contribution to special education uh, has been growing at a pace that outpaces the growth in revenues we receive elsewhere, meaning that non, uh, special education programs, uh, essentially are being drawn down in order to, uh, fund the necessary services to those students in need. Next slide, please. Bear with me. Next slide, please.
Sorry for the interruption. Just a time check here. I want to appreciate the team for this great presentation, but given that we can't extend the meeting, we do need to save ten minutes for public hearing comments. So I'm going to ask that we succinctly.
We understand.
Thank you so much.
Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Uh, those last three slides are just the numbers that are contained in the budget. Next slide, please.
This is the unrestricted general fund multi-year summary, so the three-year plan. On the third line, you can see the operating deficit of twenty-six million, twenty-three million and twenty-three million dollars over the next three years. Uh, our beginning fund balance and where we would end up without Fund seventeen, the yellow line, Fund seventeen being transferred in to give us a three percent required reserve at, as the ending fund balance in twenty-five, twenty-six and ending the year at zero. Uh, you can then see in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight that we do not have enough left in Fund seventeen to offset the structural deficit and we will end at negative eighteen million and negative forty-one million over the next three years. Next slide. This is the com, this is the combined multi-year summary. Uh, this is the unrestricted plus the restricted. You'll see that the dollars are a little bit higher because of the restricted fund balance in the components of the ending fund balance. Uh, the restricted values of sixty point six, fifty-eight point seven, and fifty-two point four uh, are what gives the combined multi-year summary, uh, a positive ending fund balance, but still negative overall due to unrestricted. Next slide. Uh, this is the upcoming parcel tax revenues that end in two thousand twenty-seven. An election will be needed to renew the current funded services related to libraries, counseling, and athletics. We cannot project the revenues for twenty-seven, twenty-eight for the parcel tax until that renewal is approved. And we've also taken out the contingent expenditures for the parcel tax, uh, that must be removed for twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Uh, and then staff recruitment and retention. We need to identify budgeted dollars to negotiate competitive compensation offers with our labor organizations. There is nothing in this budget, uh, for raises, just step increases for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, but no additional dollars for raises or benefits.
In the interest of time, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there questions from the board? Okay, just a couple of clarific, uh, clarifying questions. So how much better do you think this is gonna get by June twenty-fifth?
I think at this moment in time, we're anticipating that it'll be in the neighborhood of five million dollars, give or take.
Okay, so that's not gonna dent, that's not gonna dent a forty-one million dollar deficit.
It would only impact, I think, at this juncture, uh, the twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, deficit. Uh, it is, uh, also equally true that the state, um, in giving some may take some away in later years. So we'll keep you posted, um, but we're hoping that net-net, it'll be in the neighborhood of five to six million positive.
Any other questions? We'll go to public comment. Is there any public comments on the item?
Yes, our first public comment is Mark Mitchell. Uh, Gabrielle Michelotti.
Here are some facts pulled from a SABR report made by School Services of California comparing us to many surrounding school districts that we know our members leave to work at, such as Pittsburgh, Antioch, Oakland, Mount Diablo, and San Ramon Valley. Let's see how we compare. We are fifteenth out of nineteen in average benefits contribution, seventeenth out of nineteen in average salary, eighteen out of nineteen in average total compensation, fifteen out of nineteen for highest number of educators at or above step ten in the last column, meaning fourteen of the districts have more members with more experience. Eighteen out of nineteen for hourly pay, yet we are fourteen out of the eighteen, um, for unduplicated pupil percentage, meaning we are bringing in more money than most of these districts. So where does this money go? Because it's not going to classrooms, it's not going to students or educators, and those districts got raises this year. So by next year's document, we're even further behind. One additional note, there's an error on slide fifteen, forty-five point two five minus three point two five would leave you at forty-two unrepresented management for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, not forty-three. You're welcome for saving you two hundred thousand dollars.
Next public comment is Molly Maloney. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Molly Maloney from Go Public Schools. We've analyzed the governor's May budget and it had really good news for schools. TK twelve funding was largely protected with major new investments in literacy, TK, extended learning and more. But the district's budget proposal does not incorporate any of this. Leaving out millions of expected funding leads to making rushed opaque spending decisions later instead of strategic, student-centered plans now. This proposal therefore does not set the new superintendent or our students up for success. The budget should prioritize classrooms and direct student services, not consultants, academic growth, recruiting and retaining high-quality educators, and building family trust through fiscal transparency. Every district is facing uncertainty, but can choose to protect classrooms first. If this budget doesn't, it must be rewritten. Thank you.
Next public comment is Sky Nelson.
Hello, board. I'm concerned about the parcel tax measure T renewal. That's included in the assumptions here that it's gonna be renewed. Um, if I understood correctly, it reads, the text reads, "To maintain quality education with local funding that the state cannot take, including protecting core academics, attracting and retaining quality teachers, supporting science lab materials and activities, providing lower class sizes, preparing students for the workforce and college." We are, uh, at Dover, increasing class sizes, apparently. I learned today from one of the teachers. Um, and also purposely decreasing enrollment. They had three, almost three classes worth of kindergartners and we only allowed two. So there's this disconnect in the narrative between what we say we're doing and trying to increase enrollment and these facts about, uh, blocking enrollment at this school and, uh, class sizes. So we need to get on the same page and make sure that public understands what the decisions that are really being made are about. So there's not a miscommunication around perception for, for passing parcel tax measure T next year.
Next public comment is Jane Kinster. Please unmute yourself.
Hello. I'm worried that when I raise my hand, it mysteriously gets lowered before I get called, having me, having to raise my hand again. I'm also worried about this beautiful LCAP that got presented earlier in the night to parents and they go, oh, that's so awesome, let's go to bed. and they go, oh, that's so awesome. Let's go to bed. I'm tired. And now we have this. They don't hear all this. I'm also wondering, when have you actually ever went into, um, Fund 17 and used the money? Because it seems to get bigger all the time. And as for enrollment, our school is small and our principal is killing us. Last year or this school year, we started with two seventh grade classes of 15, but he would not do a TK or a K. Uh, another TK or, um, do a full K. And we would have had a TK, two Ks and two first grades instead of the TKK combo and first one-two combo. That would have been full. We had to bounce kids away. How is this equitable to our students and helping our students as the only school in North Richmond? I just, I don't understand what's going on and how these things keep happening. We have 23 kids wanting to get in TK next year.
Ronda.
That's the end of public comment. Okay. Um, any comments from board members? Okay, I, I have a comment. Can someone please check on what, uh, Molly Maloney said about baking in everything from the governor's budget? I'm assuming you baked everything in that you knew already. Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure of that. Any other, any other comments on the item? Okay, well, I'm hoping for really good news between now and the 25th because otherwise there's going to be a lot of discussions about what rolls forward in future years. Okay, and with that, I'll close the hearing at 10:24. Thank you, everyone. Moving now to the pulled, uh, consent item, that's me, it's fundraising. Uh, what I'm concerned about, my good friend Snap Raise. Uh, so we have an item here from June 15th to September. Pinellas Valley High School Athletics is going to use Snap Raise to fundraise. Once again, I do not have a problem with the vehicle, but it's unclear to me who is doing the fundraising. Is it all of athletics as a group? And then all the money goes into ASB? Is it individual groups within, uh, athletics that get to do it? Softball, football, uh, basketball, baseball, like what is the structure of that? And if you do that, who's running it? Is it the athletic director? Is it parents? Is it foundation money? Like, how is this working? Um, and then it's fundraising equity. Does VAPA get to do it? Do libraries get to do it? Do, uh, this seems to me to be quite different than just an individual club, Latino club, raising money for a student event. So those are my concerns about Snap Raise and this particular item. And, um, that's my concern. So if someone wants to talk about that for a second or move the item. No one wants to talk about it? Okay. Well, I, if someone from the board wants to move it.
I'll move that we approve the fundraising.
Okay, that's trustee Gonzalez Hoya who moved it.
Smith's for a second.
Okay, so there's a second from Smith Folds. Um, comments? Comment is, is that this needs to get work on, worked on. I'm going to take responsibility. I'm on the governance committee. We have so many urgent things, we can't even address this, which I actually think is really important. And so until we can address it fairly and equitably and think about it in the right way. Again, I'm not opposed to fundraising. I just don't understand where we're drawing lines on who is doing what. Um, and with that, we'll kick off votes. Student trustee Espinoza Jr.
Yes.
Trustee Baron.
Yes.
Hernandez is absent. Clark and Yana.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoya.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Enam and no. Motion carries. Everybody yes. One absence, recrler no. And with that, I think we've completed everything. And does anybody have a 30-second comment? Seeing none. Last meeting before the end of the year. Thank you, everyone. School will be out by the time we meet again. And boy, that go quick. Everybody rest up because we're going to be right back at it very shortly. And with that, I adjourn those at 10:27. Enjoy the summer.